Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of the fourteenth of August. Before we rise for a pledge allegiance in a moment of silent meditation, I ask you to please keep in your thoughts the victims of violence from Charlottesville.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call all, call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item?
Yes, our first item is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through seven.
Would anyone like to speak on these items? Next item, please.
If not, we can vote on these items. Items one and two were introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by John. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Items four and five were introduced by Gaylor Baird. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by John. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items eight and nine together. They are the application of global warming, doing business as the mill, for a Class C liquor license at three thirty, South Twenty-first Street, and the related manager application of Tamara Sloan. Would you raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your names and addresses.
Dan Sloan, four oh five, South Twenty-eighth Street.
And Tamara Sloan, four oh five, South Twenty-eighth Street.
Well, tell us about your application and what you're doing.
Well, we are in the old Lincoln telephone building on the northeast corner of Twenty-first and Capitol Parkway, putting in what is going to be our fourth mill. It's been a busy year. We were up here not that long ago with our third one out on Innovation Campus, and that, that one is actually doing extremely well. We're really pleased with how we've been able to include alcohol but not emphasize alcohol. It's just a, a nice addition to the community and the, and the atmosphere that we try and, try and provide.
Very good. Are there questions for the Sloans? Carl?
Yeah, so, so will this be a similar concept to what you have in place in Innovation Campus?
Correct. It'll be more closely modeled on Innovation Campus than like the Haymarket or College View.
Okay, very good.
John?
I was just gonna say, your corporate name is very interesting because with four locations, you're really warming the globe.
Fairly.
With that roasting, but...
Yeah. We go way back, so John will appreciate this, but that was Dale's idea.
That was Dale's.
Benny?
Your business hours. I'm excited because it's a little closer to me and it's a lot...
Thank you.
But I've tried to go into Innovation Campus a couple of times, mostly on Sundays, and I, my timing's way off. Do you anticipate the same timing, open for business at the new facility?
Um, yes, and kind of no. Innovation Campus started as seven to seven, five days a week. We included weekends a couple of weeks ago. Starting today, we've switched to seven to ten P M., seven days a week. That will be what the telegraph hours will be.
So I was there a little too early. Go now.
Yeah, they're kinda anxious to get out of their close to closing time.
Okay, Larry.
I just was gonna ask about the different licenses. It, our agenda mentions the Class C on and off sale, but was there also a catering license that you were, can you explain what you are here for?
Right, there is a catering license. That was one that kinda caught us, it was a pleasant surprise how many groups really wanted to have us cater things for them. The Innovation Campus thing kind of opened that up. We put a, kind of a bakery savory kitchen into the warehouse downtown and are doing a, a great deal of our own cooking. Have a really terrific chef on staff now, and there's just not much for the thirty to fifty people in Lincoln. Most of the caterers want two hundred, three hundred, so that's an area that we're developing very quickly.
And we have close relationships with nonprofits as well, so for example, Flatwater will be up in Wayuka doing their first, their September performance, and they've asked us to, it's all around Irish themes, and so, because Dan's worked as their accountant, bookkeeper for a number of years, filing their forms for them, that, is it would you come and be able to cater that piece? And can you bring some Guinness? Get a catering license, we could do things like that, so.
Okay. Well, so maybe just a question for Teresa, our clerk. Are we voting on the C and the K today, or are they combined somehow?
Just the C.
Just the C?
Mm-hmm.
And is there any, are they coming back for the K, or do they already have the K and just showing?
I believe they already have the K.
Um, I think we're coming back on the twenty-eighth.
Oh, okay. All right, great, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much for being here.
Great, thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item ten, manager application of Chad Pitlick for the Hyatt Place Lincoln Haymarket at six hundred Q Street. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Chad Douglas Pitlick, six hundred Q Street, Hyatt Place.
Mr. Pitlick, tell us about your application, please.
Uh, I'm applying to be the manager on our liquor license. Our former manager is no longer with us, and I'd like to apply and be on that liquor license, so we're able to sell liquor and beer and wine.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Mr. Chair, seeing no one coming forward, I'd move for approval of items eight, nine, and ten.
Second. Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion.
Another question for Teresa. Given that the Class K license was attached and on our agenda, is that something we could vote on today, or has there been proper advertising for that, rather than have them come back twice?
Right, we have to advertise it, um, the twenty-first.
Okay.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. Item eleven is accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of July sixteen through thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Would anyone like to testify on these items, claims before the city? Next item, please.
All right, next is item twelve, approving a contract between the city and Carson Co. Global for comprehensive residential and commercial recycling, communication, education, engagement, and behavior change initiative for a three-year term with the option to renew for one additional three-year term.
Good afternoon, council members. My name's Donna Garden, Public Works and Utilities, and since I talked lengthfully at this last, or two council meetings ago, I'm here to answer questions and give you information that I can.
Questions for Donna. Carl?
Yeah, Donna, one question I have is, there's been concern about the, the number of bins we have for recycling, for cardboard in particular.
Mm-hmm.
Can you address, will this address that issue at all?
Actually, this particular contract does not. We had a separate contract. We ordered, I believe, nineteen new bins for our different drop-off sites, and those are coming in. We got two of them in. That was paid for partially by grant from D E Q for a hundred and fourteen thousand, and it was matched with our funds, so.
Okay, so those are on the way.
They're on the way.
Great.
Other questions? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Yeah, for those who would like to testify, just kinda let us know you're gonna do that, so stand up and come on down towards the front, if you're not there already.
Good afternoon. My name's Wayne Smith, six three four five, South Thirty-fifth Court, Lincoln, and my comments are, the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar recycling education contract is not a worthwhile expenditure of my tax dollars. The R F P includes an option for renewal. If renewed, that would be a total of a million, seven hundred thousand dollars to try to change my behavior. I already recycle. If I had a priority list for city expenditures, this item would not even make the list. Now, I've seen some figures in the paper on a per-person basis, what this is gonna cost, but I also noticed that your goal is to add twenty-five to thirty thousand households. Well, that would be thirty dollars, roughly thirty dollars per household. If you only make half that goal, that's sixty dollars per household, and if you only make half that goal and you have the renewal, that would be a hundred and twenty dollars per household. If Lincoln is this flush with cash, and I don't think it is, please take the money and fix some more streets. One street that I would suggest you resurface is South Fortieth, just north of Highway Two. The recycling education contract is a waste of money. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, council. My name is Jamie Carson, twenty-one, twenty-four Y Street, here in Lincoln, Nebraska, and presenting briefly on the program to give some clarity. Also joining me here today is my colleague, Dr. Louise Lynch, and our partners on the contract, Verdis Group Principal Craig Moody, Kim Morrow, and our other partner is Julie Deagle with Nebraska Recycling Council here. So just briefly, wanted to give a view of the comprehensive nature of the program. The goal of the program is to increase Lincoln's recycling rate with focused services and customized efforts to work directly with both residential and commercial sectors. The way in which this process would work is that we would go out in the community and discuss with individuals and businesses, what are their needs related to recycling? In order to implement this program, what are the infrastructure needs in order to not only deploy, deploy a comprehensive recycling program, but also a marketing campaign that would be related to it. Through this feedback in the community, we would determine strategies and messages to reach different audiences with varying levels of knowledge about recycling and participation in this process. We would be sharing this information with the community through a program which would include advisory services as well as a campaign, a public campaign, to help get everyone on the same page. We wanted to put the budget numbers in front of you, as far as what we're proposing at this point. The three-year contract would include year one, year two, year three, as you see here, with a total program budget of six hundred seventeen thousand dollars, five hundred sixty-two. Also, I'd like to submit for you to consider here, I'll give to the clerk, requested was to have a revision of the total budget. This is for year one, which you have in front of you. The front side shows a pie chart of the various areas of focus within the program, from research and talking with community members to the, the recycling implementation advisory, the marketing and community engagement, brand and messaging development, and the program management and analysis, which is a critical component. On the backside, you'll see further descriptions of each of these activities. We also wanted to clarify that when we break up the consultant's time versus the direct costs, the consultant's time is, is very much more than activities that are taking place within our office. It's significantly based in community engagement, community contact, working with residents, working with businesses, high-volume waste producers, et cetera. It will include many of the things you see listed here, fieldwork, focus groups, surveys, interviews, data collection, analysis, and reporting, advisory committees, tool development for businesses, advisory services for commercial, marketing strategy development, website development, community contact and engagement, and brand messaging and development. As we've mentioned, it's a very comprehensive program which includes many, many pieces that you see here as, as, as well as others. And my colleague Craig is gonna talk more about the structure of the program.
Good afternoon. So we just wanted to quickly kinda walk you through the five main steps of the program to kinda give you a sense for how it walks through the process altogether. The first step is to conduct research and build on previous work. So there was, there were a couple of misperceptions about this being our big research project. What it is for us early on is really about doing our homework, and that's really at a grassroots level to ensure that we understand the community, and we build on things like the S W M P twenty forty plan that is, that is already there. So, in, in addition to that, some engagement of some advisory committees. So, it's not a big research project. It's really about us, early on, making sure that we get all of our ducks in a row and do the right homework so that, that it's, everything that we do thereafter is well-informed. The next step is really about selecting those strategies. So after we do our homework and we really kinda get a sense for where the project needs to go, then it's about using that information to determine exactly what mechanisms we will use to go out into the community and to affect change in that way. And that, that will cut across, that will, that, there will be many of those things that are listed there. A few to highlight, you know, one example is a business toolkit. So businesses have a big opportunity here. That's really the line of work that we spend a lot of our time dealing with, and so giving businesses the resources that they need in order to, to get ramped up, to get started, is a toolkit that we would plan to use. And again, as Jamie mentioned, some of these strategies are very much sort of a boots-on-the-ground approach. You'll also find multiple marketing activities, whether that's a public service announcement or any, any other radio and TV advertising. So it's a re, there are a lot of different mechanisms that we would use, and again, the, the homework that we would do upfront would really inform and tell us which of those we need to leverage. The next three, so once we've got a sense for what those strategies are, then it's about brand and material development. So again, you want this to be something that catches the eye, that's interesting to people, so we wanna put together the logo, the visual elements of that, that's something that Carson and Company is very, very good at, so we'll do that. And then it's execution, so actually getting the information out to the public. And, and again, that's very much about hitting the airwaves, but it's also hitting the streets. And so that's, execution is for us really kinda the main thing that we're working towards. And then finally, we want to measure and evaluate how it goes. That's a very important part of our strategy. I know that there's some interest in the council about what are those metrics that we're gonna use, so I just wanna hit those really quickly. There are really four that we consider to be primary metrics. The first is the number of subscriptions to curbside service. You're roughly at sixteen thousand, six hundred ninety today, and I would say roughly because all of that data is not into the city yet, and that's something that we wanna see, and again, we're looking at by the end of December, twenty twenty, so we're looking for a fifty to seventy-five percent increase, and these are targets. And the research that we will do first will tell us really what the right targets on these things should be. So a, any of these numbers that I'm quoting to you very much are considered tentative based on the homework that we do. Recycling rate is another big one, and, and we know that in Lincoln, there have been multiple numbers as, as targets for what our recycling rate should be. We're looking to, for a roughly fifty percent increase by the end of twenty twenty, so that takes you from twenty-one up to roughly thirty-two percent. Again, there's a little bit of homework that needs to be done to make sure we understand what the right number is there. The percentage of recyclables in the landfill, so under the assumption that a waste characterization happens, there was one done in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, that really tells you how many recyclables are in the landfill. We, we anticipate that one will be redone sometime early, maybe next month, give or take, and that will, that will reexamine really what the right number is. A lot has changed in ten years, so I think that next benchmark is really critical. And again, we're basing our numbers based on the twenty, two thousand seven information, so right now, based on that, we, we are under the impression that nine point five percent of what's in the landfill is cardboard. We're looking to cut that by fifty percent, and then we know what the total possibility is for all recyclables. We're looking to reduce that by twenty-five percent as well. And we'll do some activity measures as well, so in terms of the number of contacts with, with folks, impressions, those kinds of things, we'll, we'll certainly come back and measure all of those activities as well.
Okay.
Just following on, wanted to express our, our privilege in working with the city on the recent Recycle Right campaign to educate the community about contamination, and from that, we learned that it is a very complex system in the city, and there are a lot of questions that are out there, so the education is critically needed. We wanted to respond quickly about some, some of the comprehensive nature components of the program. We will be working directly with community members across the board. We will be providing custom advisory services to multifamily housing, multi-unit commercial property, high-volume waste producers, and it goes on. There's a number of other groups that have critical and complex issues that we are going to help them work through those challenges. We're talking nine thousand businesses, thirty thousand residents, as I mentioned, apartment buildings, large institutions. These are some of our audiences that you see. We're, we're not only tackling residents, single-family, multifamily, we have a multilingual, multicultural component, youth and the elderly approaches, all socioeconomic levels, construction and demolition, high-volume waste, builders, suppliers, the hauling, community, large institutions, and as I mentioned, with our work on the Recycle Right campaign, knowing that contamination is also an issue with mixed stream recycling, we'll continue to provide those educational materials that were developed in that campaign throughout the life of this campaign as well. We wanted to also emphasize the question that was brought up in regard to rewards or incentives. A typical rewards program, once it is ended, results in those changes going back to the original action. So we just wanted to emphasize that our approach is not only, as proven in the R F P process, less expensive, it also uses a proven method to facilitate lasting change here in the city, in which we will be inviting community members to be a part of and to really participate in this process. Finally, this was news that was reported last Thursday in the Lincoln Journal Star. We wanted to convey some of the benefits to individual communities here in the city. Residents, we will, really the direct benefit to them is that they will be reminded of the cardboard ban, and we will work very closely on the complexities related to that. Prior to, they will also be provided simple steps to sign up for curbside recycling services if they do not yet. Businesses and large institutions will benefit from advising, walkthroughs, one-on-one services, as well as large group presentations that would include information directly customized to their needs. Recycling collectors will be supported by ensuring that their customers understand the rules because they will be assessed the fees at the landfill. It will also help them keep contamination low, so when it reaches the processors, that will be an issue that will also be mitigated from the beginning, knowing that contamination causes increased costs for processors, as well as safety issues at the processing facilities. This program, we really feel, will benefit the city of Lincoln to help it reach its goals in increasing our recycling rate, decreasing or diverting waste from the landfill, and also continuing efforts following the end of this contract, knowing that many of these materials will live on and be resources to the city in the future. Our companies do have a record of success here in Lincoln, as well as, as across the country, and so wanted to point out a handful of our clients that we've worked with, and also call out one statistic on a campaign and a program that was led by Verdis Group called Midtown on the Move, that it was a similar methodology that led the development of that program, and ninety percent, in a survey of, survey respondents that came back said that they would continue those habits after the close of the program, really showing its lasting effect. And also, again, thanking Julie Deagle, there's a wealth of information and resources at Nebraska Recycling Council, and we're glad to have them sitting at the table to be a component of the advisory and development of this program. We're glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Timely buzzer? Okay. So, Jane?
Jamie, I have a, a question and, and a concern that we've heard from some of the constituents. So can you tell us that six hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred and sixty-two was the original amount in your contract? So how did it get from six hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred and sixty-two to the, to eight hundred and forty-nine or eight hundred and sixty-six thousand?
Sure. Working with the city of Lincoln, it was expressed that there would be need for additional advisory services. So in response to concerns about the cost of the program, we've gone back to suggesting the original proposal that was submitted, and that basically takes away some of the additional advisory services to work with businesses. It, let's see here, I have a list of the modifications if we wanna look directly. It, it basically decreases the number of impressions across the community that we can really make throughout this process. So as far as our commitment to what we would be delivering on from the original R F P, our commitment still stands. We would still be really executing on what's laid out here in the presentation that you see today, but there would be a little less that would take place in year one because of the decreased cost in year one.
Okay.
From that eight hundred fifty thousand.
John?
Now, as I recall, just to clarify, and I'm not sure if you can, but there, that six hundred and seventeen thousand, as I recall, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, that came from the N D E Q grant?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So the city's cost is under four hundred thousand, about three hundred and ninety thousand?
The, the N D E Q grant, yes, was a match fund grant for the two hundred and twenty-five thousand, and if Donna wants to answer any questions in regard to the city budget, she'd be welcome to come up, too.
Okay. Might not hurt to come up, Donna, just in case here, there's something. You said you wanted to reach out to the community, study all groups. What about all the studies that have been done nationally? Because this is not a new concept of recycling and so forth, and I'm just questioning or wondering, aren't there some templates, while it's not identical, but that might be much more efficient and economical for us to take from other locations to apply here, so we get to that bottom line? So instead of a fifty to seventy-five percent increase, we get a seventy-five percent or what have you? It just seems like, and what I sensed in the earlier part of the agreement before you deleted some of it, there's a lot of, of study and things that, rather than be in an action mode of a do-it.
That's a great question, Councilman. I will say one thing, and then I'll also call out Verdis Group Partners to speak on the research behind it. We did include in our presentation and, and wanna emphasize more that the, in Lincoln here, the research that's been done in the city of Lincoln, we have participated in that process from the early stages, and so we are aware of the institutional knowledge that exists, and we will be incorporating the solid waste management plan, as well as the findings of the task force, into the research that guides decisions on this program. And Craig, if you want to speak to other research?
Yeah, I would echo that. And that's a great question. You know, we've been doing this type of work for the last eight years, and the one thing that I will tell you is that when we first started this business, which is very much focused on sustainability, energy efficiency, recycling, we never imagined how much time we would be spending on recycling work. And, and the reality is, that is because it's, it's far more complicated than I think most people realize, especially when you zoom it out to a big institutional level, and that's really where our work is best suited. So as it relates to leveraging the best practices that are out there industry-wide, we are absolutely familiar with those. And the reality is, at, at a community scale, and this is what we applied to the Midtown on, on the Move project, at a community scale, the research shows that the best practices are those really boots-on-the-ground approaches. It's, it's the direct contact, it's answering questions face-to-face, so it's, the, the more you can zoom down to a grassroots level, the higher likelihood it is that you're gonna have a meaningful, good outcome. If, if you, if you stay at a really high altitude, and I don't wanna diminish the importance of these things, but if you strictly just stop at education from a marketing standpoint, it's not enough. You actually gotta get down and talk to people and meet them where they spend their time, and really have that conversation and, and answer their questions, because there are, there are likely to be a variety of reasons why people don't recycle, either at home or in their business. We've got a good sense for what they are, but wanna make sure that we know definitively in Lincoln if there are any unique issues. And then we wanna address those barriers, and whether they're real or perceived doesn't matter. A perceived barrier is still a barrier, so we really wanna get to the, the nitty-gritty of what those challenges are so that we can get everyone over that hump. And then we want to address those barriers, and whether they're real or perceived doesn't matter. A perceived barrier is still a barrier, so we really want to get to the nitty-gritty of what those challenges are, so that we can get everyone over that hump.
Someone else want to answer, or I've got other questions? But, okay, well, I was just going to say, when we went through some recycling legislation a year or more ago, you know, I think there was a fairly strong support from this council to emphasize education and get to the bottom line, but, and I think it's just that bottom line. When you say boots on the ground, that gets to be an expensive process versus working out through centers of influence or what have you. You mentioned institutional work. I mean, a lot of our institutions do recycle now. I think the difficult thing is some conditions where it's just very difficult distribution-wise or pickup-wise. Did I notice you've taken out of the recycling program the behavioral change portion on your slides?
We're really just trying to get beyond the technical language of the studies and of the methodology to show, I mean, really, the core component of the program is, like we've been talking about, getting out within the community and understanding the varying needs of multifamily complexes, businesses, residents, so we can understand, as Craig mentioned, the challenges that exist and be responsive directly to those, as opposed to trying to provide a blanketed approach that's not going to have the involvement of the city or contributions from residents and business owners on how they would like this to look or what questions they have.
So, you just condensed it to recycling and deleted that behavioral change program?
It's just, it's just really not using the technical language in this presentation, per se.
Okay, those are pretty simple words. Okay. The, you've mentioned a couple of times on contamination. I wasn't sure I understood what you meant by contamination, and I often think of wasteful or hazardous type things, but could you explain exactly the reference you were using it into recycling and so forth?
Sure, of course. Briefly, contamination in mixed-stream recycling, so if a resident would sign up for curbside recycling services, anything and everything that has the recycling label on it cannot be thrown in mixed-stream recycling, and it actually varies between the haulers. And so, contamination, you really need to understand the rules that each hauler has for mixed recycling. So, if you have one big bucket, and you throw in your plastics, your aluminum, et cetera, it's not only knowing what can go into that bin, but also having it clean and dry, knowing that some items can gum up the machines that process those materials, and really keeping mixed-stream recycling to be those components or those recyclable materials that are supposed to be in it, because that's what the machinery is built to process. So, that was a past campaign, actually, that has already produced educational materials related to it that would be continued as a component.
Is that the one you just completed for the city for about, what, 80,000 or something?
Correct.
Dollars? And you showed, too, on that one screen, what each of the groups here has done in other contracts, and I was curious, can you give a quantity on the cost of those? Or, for example, your own, Ms. Carson, how much did that involve in consultants fees or for those contracts?
I would need to look back at the numbers specifically, but they were multi-year projects with the clients.
I know some Lincoln was 80, it was 79 or 80,000, somewhere in there, if I recall correctly. Were the others that large?
They were at that scale, yes. They were multi-year contracts, very much on retainer basis with many of the clients. And then, if Craig, you wanted to speak to.
Yeah, our line, there are very few direct costs in the work that we do. Our work is, for the most part, almost all consulting work. So, when it comes to working with a client, whether or not we're developing a sustainability master plan for the University of Nebraska at Omaha, as an example, that's all us, working hand-in-hand with the client to actually develop and deliver a 120-page master plan document. And in other cases, we're working on an ongoing basis with advisory services that are focused on helping a client actually implement changes to their operations, so that they can recycle more, reduce energy, so on and so forth. So, as an example, Nebraska Medical Center is one of our larger clients. I can't tell you how big the contract is, but we work on an annual basis to actually help them instill and institute a variety of different changes, whether it's recycling, energy efficiency, water efficiency, so forth, to make that done. So...
How long have you been working with the med center?
About seven years.
And what do you think they've paid you so far?
I can't disclose that. Sorry.
Not appropriate.
Okay.
If I may.
Sure.
I'm Julie Deagle with the Nebraska Recycling Council, and I've been involved in recycling work for, since 2009. And I was, before that, I was an avid recycler. But, anyway, I just want to kind of clarify. I worked for Waste Cap Nebraska previously, and now I'm directing the Nebraska Recycling Council, and I know from experience, we have worked with businesses, lots of businesses, to help them with the recycling programs. And what we find, even with businesses that have what they think of as robust recycling programs, they're not. There's lots of contamination, so there are a lot of problems, and there's a lot of education that we've been trying to do for a number of years. What I do know is, with community-based social marketing, which is what we're talking about here, is that what we know is that education is not enough. Most people already know that recycling is important, but education is needed, and that we know that education is needed to help people figure out how to process, you know, that for cardboard, they need to smash down the cardboard, the boxes, and they need to rinse out bottles and empty bottles and things like that. But, education as to why recycling is important is not enough. And we also know that awareness about the availability of recycling is not enough. It does not motivate people to start recycling. And we also know that economic incentives are not enough. Financial motivation does not work with recycling. First of all, there's not a lot of, a lot of money to gain from recycling, but also, people recycle because it's intrinsic, because they believe in it. And people that don't recycle might respond to incentives, but again, if they're taken away, as was mentioned before, those, that participation tends to go away as well. What's different with community-based social marketing is that it uses actual research. It's science-based. So, what it, the research, the one-on-one research, is more costly, yes, but it really does drill down to what are the exact things, exact barriers as to why people are not recycling? Is it because they have to walk two steps to the left? Is it because they have to? They don't know what to do with, if there's liquid in their bottle? Is it, you know, people don't always know what to do, or those are those little things? And sometimes, it's the littlest things are the barriers. And so, you need to find out, what are the exact barriers in Lincoln, Nebraska, in these situations for people that, to participate, from participating in recycling? And then, what are those perceived benefits if they do? So, the thing with community-based social marketing is, you're trying to figure out what the barriers are, lower them, and what the benefits are, whether they're perceived or real, and increase them. So, you're creating a pathway that's larger for people to recycle, and it actually works. And community-based social marketing measures outcomes, not outputs. So, it measures things like, how many people have signed up for curbside recycling, rather than how many impressions did you put out? Because we know that it's that one-on-one, it's that face-to-face, really, that has the biggest impact. Even if you can't reach as many people, you have a bigger impact by using this method. So, that's all I have.
Any questions?
I have a question for Donna. John asked that question about, this contract is 617,562, but if you back out the 225,000, which is the grant, so, is it, is it correct to say that the city of Lincoln taxpayers are obligated to pay that, the balance, which is that 392,000?
392, yes. That's correct, and it comes out of our solid waste revenue funds, but it is 392,562 that the city would provide on top of the grant.
And...
If I may on that, so when you say it comes out of the solid waste fund, will that be the landfill fees that essentially are projected in?
An occupation tax, yes.
And they go into the rates that we paid our waste haulers?
That's correct.
So, it's not like the property tax or something?
No, it's not like property tax.
And is this, this is some of the 500,000 we already set aside?
It would be, yes.
Okay.
And I wanted to make one other statement, the question about what they had, what was out, what we added on to the contract besides those other services, we also had a waste characterization study included in there.
Okay.
That was part of that.
Larian.
My questions are for the folks here from Carson and from Verdis Group. You laid out very clearly the different phases of the project, and that you intend to have metrics to evaluate your success, and I just wanted to confirm that in the, in the contract, there are also some language, there's also language about expectations the city has regarding results. And it spells out pretty clearly what those expectations are, and it mentions phases. And so, are you comfortable with the phases and the fact that 60 days before the end of each phase, that you have to submit a summary of your progress, and that the city has the ability to determinate at any point if they aren't feeling like there's satisfaction in hitting those benchmarks and metrics? Are you...
In our, when we were called back after the proposal process to present to the city, one of the components of the presentation, we were asked to present our transition plan, if the city did, in fact, ask to move this work back, too. And we are comfortable with that. We understand that 60 days prior to the start of each phase, we will provide a revised scope and reporting back and confirmation of, of the work of the program thus far. So, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I had two things. Great question. One is, the, for us, the contract methodology is pretty consistent to what we're used to. If we're not delivering and adding value, you should send us home. And that's, that's how we work with all of our clients. So, that's something that we're completely comfortable with, and that's really what the plan was originally when we brought the original proposal to the city. The one thing that I want to caution, though, is there are issues with respect to the metrics that we've identified and timing. So, we got to keep an eye on, and we're going to work really hard to ensure that we pull some of those metrics together and that data together, but the city's current processes don't typically allow those things to just tidily match up, so that 60 days prior to the end of year one, we've got data. It's just a little bit messier than that, without boring you of the details. But, that is, that is sort of a challenge that we have to overcome in the early parts of the contract, to make sure that we're creating the processes to collect the kind of data that the city needs in order to tell us whether or not you want to keep us around for the remaining part of the contract.
And playing on that, just a few other details. In all cases, there's a bit of a lag time in some of the data reporting, as well as the data disclosure from the recycling processors or the recycling collectors in the city is reported annually at one time.
So, in other words, the city, correct me if I'm wrong, is, the city is still collecting that information for 2016 today. So, that's the lag that Jamie is referring to. Something we want to address, but currently, from an ordinance perspective, that's, that's the way that the law requires that data to get reported back to the city.
Earl.
Thank you. Okay, so, in material you've provided before, you indicated that we are recycling at a, what, 21% rate, something like that? So, what you're doing is to help bump that up, and you're talking about recycling of anything that can be recycled?
It is, yes. Based on the RFP, it is a comprehensive program.
Okay.
But, one component of the work will be ensuring that residents and businesses are prepared for the cardboard ban.
Okay, that was my next question.
In April, yeah.
Okay, so, so that is coming up in April. Quick story. Yesterday, I had brunch across the street from the post office, and suddenly, at about 11 o'clock yesterday morning, there is a hubbub of activity like I haven't seen around the post office in a long time, Sunday morning at 11 o'clock. As mail trucks drive by, I see they're stacked up with boxes, familiarly observable boxes from Amazon. So, how's that impacting us and recycling cardboard? Because, I mean, this is a, yeah, very much an anecdotal experience, but seeing that tells me that we've got a whole lot more cardboard coming into this community, so what are we going to do about that?
As far as the, the infrastructure for the city-sponsored drop-off sites, as Donna mentioned, they're already increasing the number of receptacles that are available to collect cardboard there. That is also something that if you break it down and place it with your curbside recycling, that's also collected by all the recycling collectors here in the city. In terms of the education program, that will be a question that's incorporated into our early conversations and gathering feedback to determine what types of questions are there and provide easy resources to make responding to the start of that ban easy for residents and businesses, which, as you saw in the presentation, is complex. It's, it's different for different businesses, it's different for the type of housing that you may live in.
So, is there a significant increase in the amount of cardboard that's coming into our community?
An increase in the cardboard?
Mm-hmm.
I think there, well, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what the waste characterization would reveal, accompanied by the data that the recycling collectors and processors provide. So, those two data points would tell us exactly the volume of cardboard that was...
And based on past presentations, I think Donna might be...
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to mention that in terms of the amount of cardboard we're getting, we have seen in the first half of this year about a 7% increase at our drop-off site, so we are seeing more cardboard there.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Cindy?
Thank you. Thanks for being here today. So, I have, there are a couple of things. First, we have this little over $200,000 drop in what we were looking at last week and what we're looking at this week, and I know you were following up on Councilwoman Gail Bear's question. You were very particular in itemizing out the tasks and so forth. So, this 617,000 figure will take you through all three phases?
All three, yes, phases or years. It would be the entire program cycle.
Okay, so, individually, as we go through, like, for instance, just in phase one, I was looking, it looks like task three is the one with the largest cost. That alone is about a quarter of a million, and then task five. So, how will each of those tasks be affected by the reduction?
The 617,000, if you're looking at the original budget, which was submitted with our proposal, task three is, if you also referenced the pie chart, is essentially the marketing and community engagement. So, that is a significant portion of our time out in the community, as well as the campaign, the public campaign, to educate about the upcoming cardboard ban, as well as how to subscribe for curbside recycling services and the other items we talked about.
So, that particular phase will be hit significantly large by this reduction?
The proposal that we put forward, we are still completely committed to delivering on everything that was laid out in the proposal, which also reflects everything that you saw in the presentation today. So, it will, it will most affect one-on-one and advisory services for businesses and the commercial sector, as well as a few other, other items related to implementation. All portions of the budget will go down a bit, a little bit less research in the beginning as well, but mostly, it affects the advisory services for year one.
So, the first-year price tag, because this, this looked to me like phase, the first-year phase was, would nearly take the $600,000. And so, is, I know that some are considering maybe, you know, coming back to us for more money, but do you anticipate that you will, over the next three years, have to come back to us for more money?
We do not. We do not. I mean, it's, it's hard to anticipate, you know, what the needs are, but we laid out the proposal in a way that we would be responsive to all of the needs within the RFP.
Okay.
So, that would be the full three years, 617,000.
Okay, and then, I wanted to talk just a little bit, you mentioned methodology, that this is kind of, I presume that you're looking at methodology from other places and talked about targeting audiences, like recycling for the elderly and that type of thing. I'm presuming there are methodologies that have been used in other places that can just be applied here, if we have the same, I mean, we have elderly here, and we have children in school, and we have probably all the same people groups that have been explored other, other places. Is that the methodology you're talking about implementing?
Yeah, generally speaking, I mean, again, our job is to be familiar with and aware of what the best practices are in other communities, and take those best practices and probably refine them a little bit to be a little bit unique to Lincoln and any, any opportunities that are specific to Lincoln, and then execute them in that way. So, in many ways, our approach is based on not only the work that we've been doing for many other clients that are extraordinarily large, but also sort of gleaning off of all of the other best practices that we see in other communities. Sure, it's, it's hard to articulate exactly what those are, per se, but... For sure, it's hard to articulate exactly what those are per se, but...
So, the fact that there will no longer be a waste characterization study, I'm a little concerned about that because that's one of the things that Donna said was being backed out. But when Councilman Eskridge asked about the Amazon, you indicated you really wouldn't know that without that study. How big an impact does backing that study out of this process, how big of an impact does it make?
I'll make one other point, and then I'll have Donna speak on the waste characterization study. In terms of the research, as he mentioned, it is our job to be aware of other best practices in cities and implement that here as well, while customizing it with the needs of Lincoln. And that research phase will be short. But one of the things that we know well about the community here is that we want the community to be integrated and a part of this process. And so that will also be a component of that early time where we're out having conversations and understanding what those challenges are prior to. So that is also a component of that short research phase in the beginning.
And yes, with concerns of the waste characterization study, we certainly want to go through with that at some point because we think that data is very important to this work. This would not be consultant-led, that wouldn't be part of this contract. We would have to either consult, get another contractor to do the work, or do it within our staff ourselves. So, that is something we do plan to go forward with. It's still part of our budget in terms of a special, there was a line item in our budget for a $60,000 waste characterization study that we had planned for. But we put it into this contract, it's kind of wrapping it all together. But if we're taking it out of this contract, then we'll look at doing it separately.
So, is possible it'll still be done, it'll still cost money, just not with these folks?
That's correct.
Then, I wanted to ask about the original proposal, because it's been mentioned a lot and it sounds like we're going back to that original proposal. Is there some place that the public has access to that online already through the city or that we have access to for those actual figures?
Yes, I do believe you have all of the bid figures and the information that was included in the original package that was sent out from purchasing. So you should have all of that information. It is available.
And so do we have it in the form like we have the contract that is in front of us online or that the citizens have been able to see?
Yeah, I do believe so, yes.
It was submitted on August 3rd.
It was where?
Submitted to us on August 3rd.
Okay, but does that, where is it for the public?
I don't know.
It's online, just the city website.
Thank you.
A couple of questions. One is follow-up on Cindy's comments about sort of the fact that we have similar population to other communities, but a glance at how this, how solid waste is managed in our city certainly shows that we have a unique reality in our relationship between the city and private haulers. Can you speak to how the unique relationship affects the challenges that you face in trying to get people to know how to comply with new requirements with recycling?
We've, through the past campaign as well as any future work, we've taken very seriously our collaboration with the hauling community. They will be a critical part of this program. As far as providing inputs, they're one of the stakeholders. So, really working with them and understanding those complexities is a part of the program. As far as how it will work into the program, what, say your direct question one more time?
I think if you look across cities throughout the country, you'll often see, and the Solid Waste Task Force looked at this, whether, you know, the arrangement is that a city bids out a contract for recycling to, you know, a small number of haulers, or they do districts. And our community has said, no, we don't want to do, go that far at this point, that that is, we want to preserve our unique arrangement with the private haulers and waste haulers. But what that means is that we have many different partners to try and work with and many different, different, I mean, depending on the hauler you use, you can recycle in different ways. So it adds a layer of complexity that even though we have the similar, you know, we have old people who need to be reached through your campaign and we have young people who need to be reached, we have a very different system in place in our community that presents a unique opportunity to make this compliance work, but also potentially a little more challenging.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll echo what you said. It is, it does add complexity, but I would also look to it as an opportunity because all of those haulers are, in many ways, the experts that are out and about, understanding what the market is driving. So, we aim to engage them as part of our advisory committees to help us ensure that we're going in the right direction. They stand to lose the most in many ways if this doesn't go well because those cardboard fees get assessed onto the haulers. The other thing I would add is that you are very unique, but you're not alone. Sioux Falls, South Dakota, I can't speak to the details of Sioux Falls, but, and we haven't worked with the city directly, but they have a very similar system, which is, it's decentralized, it's privatized. The difference there is that all of their recyclables go to one place. So that what is recyclable is very much dictated by that processor, whereas in Lincoln, there are some idiosyncrasies around that. But there are things that we can learn from places like that who have made some really concerted efforts in the last five years to ramp up their recycling efforts.
And by challenges, I mean, just the simple example would be collecting data from 40 providers as opposed to one or two. It's not that there's something wrong with the system, it's just a different challenge that you face in trying to collect data here as opposed to many other cities. Because that's what I was trying to get at, there are unique characteristics of our system or close to unique if you add in South Dakota.
One thing that I will add in addition to that as well is, as we mentioned, the ordinance put in place data collection processes that occur on an annual cycle. And that is required for permitting for the haulers. So they are required to submit data in order to receive, excuse me, their permit each year. And one general comment that I will make as well, in getting to know the hauling community, they care quite a bit about our city and take a lot of pride in the cleanliness that they add to the city, even talking about investors and groups who come to town, sporting events, people comment on how clean the streets are. And the haulers take pride in that they have such careful specialized care in how they provide their services, that I think they do add to the cleanliness of our city and the pride that we know is here in Lincoln. And as Craig mentioned, the opportunities, we see this as an opportunity as well because they have a lot of unique insights and ideas and really do care about waste hauling in our community, which makes a huge impact on the city and our landfills and more.
And then, the second question has to do with a different topic, and that was, you touched on behavior change. And I wanted to just ask a question about another initiative that the county did that I believe would fall into this category, but I guess I want to get your feedback on this. But a couple of years ago, our county treasurer implemented a change in the way that people were notified of delinquent tax payments. It used to be a small postcard. To try and increase compliance with paying taxes on time and to try and prevent homes from being sold at auction because of that lack of compliance, the county treasurer decided to send bigger letters, put the word urgent on the envelope, include a return envelope, and send them twice instead of once. And that has resulted in much more compliance with payment of taxes, and that has saved a lot of hassle for that office and for the government, and ultimately certainly served those people better because the threat of losing their homes was reduced. Is that an example of behavior change modification? I mean, that is something that plays on people's natural instinct to open something that says urgent.
I mean, this, it really, that would be what's considered a prompt. And so making it convenient for them to understand the processes. These ideas have been pieces of conversations we've had in terms of how to approach the marketing component of it. If it's not an engage, an in-person engagement, then making it as simple as possible, as clear of information as possible, to either get your questions answered if you choose to use city-sponsored drop-off sites, or to sign up for those curbside recycling services. So that would be a large component of this program, is making that a simple, clearly communicated option for residents and businesses here. Absolutely, that's a great idea.
The only difference might be, is that with this technique, you would do a little research and find out, face-to-face with people, what would make you notice this? You know, what are the things that you would notice? Would it be a larger envelope? So you would drill down and you would know, you wouldn't take a guess, you would drill down and really find out what would work for this, in this situation. And you'd interview several different people to find that out.
Other questions? Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, everybody, and congratulations, Benny, on the new city councilman. You're sitting with the best of them. My name is Jimmy Klein. Lived in Lincoln all my life. I am the, I am here in two reasons. I'm the president of the Lincoln Solid Waste Management Association and Recycling, and I also own L.E.C.A.T. disposal, garbage and recycling. And so, like this gentleman said, boots on the ground, that's us. I'll just go real quickly. We are in support of education. We have to have education of some sort. That's all, I guess all I got to say there. I've been reading a lot of, there's a lot of articles in the newspaper. I'm still a newspaper reader, so there's a lot of people, you know, writing in and support education, this, education, that, but where do we go with it? I guess that's where, you know, you folks have to develop that. To answer your question, John, I think you were asking about contamination. I just wanted to, what contamination is to me, what I hear from the places where we take our recycling is yard waste, diapers, metal bands, coat hangers, that's the true contamination. And we, you know, we hear about it. And we take our loads in there and it's contaminated, we get told, and we try to educate, we try to educate our customers also, okay, through phone calls, go out, talk to them in person, letters. I would say whatever this education process is going to be, it's got to be simple. It's got to be simple. To get real fancy, I think this is going to go over people's heads. Couple of things. I spoke with Betty Brosches, one of her gals out there, people who are centering me in need. They deal with 17 different languages at any given time. So, I mean, that's the people we got to get across to. I also talked with the People Health, Lincoln, People's Health Center on North 27th this morning. 15 different languages came out of there. These are the people we got to get across to. We see it as haulers, these people are homeowners, they live in apartments, they live in duplexes, they're renters, you name it. But how do we get that to them? My grandparents immigrated over here from Russia 100 years ago. I'm very proud of my heritage. I'm a North Lincoln Russian, moved up to South Lincoln here, so I'm very proud of that. So these people have to have a chance also. How do we get this message to them? They have to be, they have to be educated. They have to know about it. That's got to be a big challenge for you. You've got to, you've got to reach out there. I guess the biggest barrier, in my opinion, is cost. Nobody talks about costs. I don't care how you spell it, single-stream recycling is 30 bucks a ton to get rid of it. You can almost throw it in the landfill. So, that's the barrier. You know, that's what's, I believe, holding a lot of people back. We offer the recycling, and my recycling, my numbers are going up all the time, you know, all the time. So, it's there, the program's already implemented, and I guess that's it. I'm very proud of this city, and you're right, we, the haulers clean up everything in this town. And you don't have to call the office and get a call center or wait for a supervisor or some manager to call you back. You're going to get a call back from me or my competitors. And if I don't clean it up, my competitors will. I guess that's all I got. Any questions?
Jane?
Mr. Klein, I'm guessing you do both residential and commercial? So, when you look at the residential side of it, are, how do you currently help a customer who's, who wants to recycle, but they aren't doing the right thing? They're mixing things that shouldn't go in the recyclable bin. How do you help them?
Pick up the phone, call them, then we'll send them out a brochure that shows what we do and do not take. On our website, it's on there, what we do and do not take, what the contamination is, or go out and talk to them in person.
And is it the same for the commercial side?
Exactly, yep. The commercial people, right now, the commercial people that are recycling, and for the most part, the residence, residential people that are recycling, they're doing it, and they're doing it right. It's, when the ban goes into effect, then the plane, it's going to change, it's going to get tougher then. You know, I heard you, I heard you talk about the haulers are going to get fined. I thought we weren't going to get fined, but is what the talk was earlier, but I hope there's some leeway there, Donna.
Donna, did you want to come up and clarify that before Mr. Klein leaves?
Remember, we talked about that. I remember that was at a lot of the meetings.
And we did. And we didn't talk about a fine, it's actually a fee. And it's, when you go, it's an unacceptable load fee at the landfill. So that if you dump a load that's completely filled with cardboard that's recyclable, we would either charge you the fee or ask you to clean it up. And if you cleaned it up, there would be no fee. It's not a fine.
Okay, but it's not going to be a complete load, I trust me.
Yeah. There'll be some, if there's some in there, or if there's enough in there that is recyclable, we would ask you to...
Please work with us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's going to be a process, so.
John?
Well, following up there, do you know now the difference between a fee and a fine and a tax?
Same thing as an employee and associate.
Worker. Yeah, I think one of the things that'll be important, and you're right with the Solid Waste Haulers Association, that you have a lot to share. And I would hope that in this study, assuming we go forward, that at the front end, you can have a lot of input, because you see the day-to-day nature of your customers and, you know, there's some differences when you deal with a single-family home versus a multi-family complex apartments, or a commercial tenant that has, where there's a single commercial tenant that owns all the property, or there's a multi-tenant property. And it would just seem like you might be able to cut to the chase on some of those where you're out there, you know, you really have the boots on the ground.
Yep.
And help us so we get across there and save people, so we don't have to add to those fees or fines at that landfill, and we can help everybody in Lincoln recycle in a way that's economical, as economical as we can make it.
And we will. And I have to say, my competitors, the most of them will be, that's what makes America great. I mean, there's a lot of competition and the education process. It's going to come from us too, but we need help too.
Like, one of the attributes you have is nearly all of you are homegrown people. You're not the only one that said immigrants come in, and I think that's a good factor, is that you have pride in the city.
Love this city. It's a great city. I absolutely love it. There's so much hate going on in this country, and it's just, and this isn't the time, but it's sad, but it's, it's got to be put to rest somehow, but anyhow.
You've heard us talk about the city's expectations, the contractors that results come about from this education effort. And there are steps along the way, every 60 days, they're going to be reporting on these different results. And I think they also said that some of the data collection that they'll be able to do only comes in annually, so there might be some lag. And I guess I'm a little concerned about this lag in terms of really being able to check in along the way as to how much success we're having. Given that you're required, I guess by law, to report data on an annual basis, is there any chance that your association might be able to work to try and get some data to them, you know, prior to that year timeline? Is there a room for collaboration there to provide some figures along the way so that we can get a better read on how we're doing? I mean, is that data that you even have to share early, or is there any possibility?
I believe so. I believe it could. If we're approached, approach our association, that will work with you. Here's the one thing, I guess I'm confused, is I was, I turned in my information, I believe it was May 30th. This is August 14th, so why, where's this information at? Who's holding it up? I mean, I've turned it in, and I think for those haulers that aren't turning in the information, whatever the consequences are, it needs to be cracked down. I don't understand what the holdup is, because the information's there.
I guess I'd love to hear from Donna on that. I don't know much about that.
Not picking on you, Donna.
That's okay. And Lincoln Lancaster County Health does the permitting, but I do know there were three companies that have not turned in their information yet out of all of them in Lincoln, so we have a little bit of information that hasn't come in. I'm assuming that they're, and I can't speak for Lincoln Lancaster County Health, but that they haven't received their licenses for renewal, so...
So are they still hauling?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know specifics on it, so...
Okay, Jane?
Mr. Klein, well, how do you collect the data? Do you do it on a weekly basis, or do you do it a monthly basis? How does it get recorded? How does it get recorded? And then, how can the city or the recycling team help you, I guess, improve on turning over that data to the city as well?
Well, and I can't speak for my competitors, but for myself, when we, when we unload our loads, then we get a ticket and we get a weight, and, and then I, I just use the QuickBooks. And we just, we enter it right into that. And, and for me, it's called landfill recycling, and it's different from what the landfill. So, I'm able to pull it up just like that right now. That's, that's how I track it. And then I've got my route lists, and that's how I track my customers. And, you know, and it goes up and down. It's going up. That's, that's how I track the customers and the weight. Does that answer your question?
Yes. So, that if, if the recycling team wanted to get that information maybe on a monthly basis, that's not an, an excessive burden to you, because it's, you've already entered that data from that load?
I think a monthly basis would be excessive. I can't speak for my competitors. You know, we're, it's, it takes a lot to run one, but the, I think during this transition, it, it can be, the information could be speeded up some to get to 'em. We're willing to work with everybody. We always have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Next testifier.
Hello. I'm Andrew Norman. I'm the director of Here Nebraska. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to the important issue of Lincoln's future in regards to recycling waste in the city Lincoln will choose to become. I operate a small nonprofit business with an office and employees in Lincoln, and I'd argue that, that you'd find few stronger advocates for the city than myself. I'm proud of so many people, places, and things in Lincoln. As the director of Here Nebraska, part of my job is to tell that story to a worldwide audience. We're proud to be partnering with Carson and Company Global this year to make sustainability a major component of this year's Lincoln Calling Music Festival, which in 2016 attracted concertgoers from twelve states, twenty-seven cities, and the Netherlands. Already this year, six weeks out, we've sold tickets to eleven states, thirty cities, and to a couple in Spain. In syncing with Lincoln Startup Week, Lincoln Young Professionals Week, and Make Lincoln, we want Lincoln Calling visitors to see a progressive town that is committed to investing in its startup and arts communities. So, this vote is important, not only from a tangible resource and environmental perspective, but also in regards to the city's messaging and identity, especially as it affects young people's consideration to whether they'd ever live in Lincoln, Nebraska. I understand when some citizens see a big number like five hundred thousand, or whatever it is, it can seem shocking. But certainly, context is critical. If we can all agree that recycling is important, and hopefully, we can all agree that it is, doesn't it make sense to tackle it strategically with education behind it? Clearly, this, this hasn't been happening well enough. In 2016, Nebraska's recycling rate fell behind all of its neighbors, Wyoming, South Dakota, Missouri, Colorado, Iowa, and Kansas. If this conversation was about football, we'd be hiring, hiring a new coach. Herbie Husker would be considering a transfer. And I'd urge you to consider this from a, a business and jobs perspective. Lincoln has the opportunity to create some real tangible change that absolutely should be an important component of its external messaging. Lincoln cares about its air, land, and water. Lincoln is taking the steps necessary to attract the types of people and jobs that will position it, it as a regional powerhouse. Lincoln is invested in the long term, and Lincoln is putting its money where its mouth is. Your vote will tell me whether or not you're behind that vision and fu, and future, and it will absolutely impact my confidence in and willingness to evangelize about this city. I urge the city council members to approve this expenditure for education. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next testifier? Yeah. You can go ahead and sign in after you're done speaking, if you like.
Okay. Recycling has always been important to me. When I moved back to Lin...
Could you tell us your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Joeth Zuko, 2310 Ryan Street. When I moved back to Lincoln in 2002, I was happy to see a variety of items that could be recycled, as well as all of the sites around Lincoln for drop-off. I've raised my daughters to recycle. They will bring home plastic to reuse or recycle if they don't see a bin and other recyclables. I'm sure I've influenced their recycling at home, but LPS also encourages recycling, and I think that's where a lot of kids learn about recycling. At home, we put out one trash bag a week, and we save glass, plastic, cardboard, paper, and newspaper that we drop off every couple of weeks at a recycling site. I couldn't imagine not recycling. I love that our city cares enough about the environment to put recycling front and center throughout the city through receptacles and programs that collect materials and objects that don't belong in the landfill. And I love that you have voted to keep cardboard out of the landfill. As Jane Raybold has said, it could increase the amount of material recycled in Lincoln by forty percent. And as Leiron Gaylor Barrett has said, it will extend the life of the landfill and save taxpayers money. All of these points are great for Lincoln. With the United States pulling out of the Paris Climate Agreement, it's going to fall to cities and states to make positive changes like this. I'm here today to ask you to approve the contract to start the education program. Educating the public is going to be a big part of this positive change for Lincoln. There are going to be a lot of questions. For instance, can I recycle a pizza box? What about a box that might have oil or paint on it? What happens if I throw out cardboard because I forget about the ban? And will I be fined? But I guess we know now, I won't. And an education program will provide a lot of answers. I hope that once people understand the program, recycling cardboard will become second nature. And for those who aren't already recycling, maybe it will encourage them to recycle more. You've come this far and almost doubling Lincoln's recycling rate, and I hope that you will take the next step and vote to approve funds for education. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please. Welcome.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Don Wesley. I'm here representing Recycle Bank. And I hope you'll forgive me, but I'm gonna kinda read through this to try and stay on track and not take too much of your time. Recycle Bank was founded in 2004 and has been singularly focused on changing behavior around waste. Over three hundred and fifty municipalities are served by Recycle Bank's platform. Recycle Bank bid on the City of Lincoln's recycling education RFP, but we weren't selected. We were very disappointed, I can tell you that, and we did not testify at the hearing two weeks ago because we respect the RFP process and the people involved in the issue of the City of Lincoln. Well, then something unexpected happened. You decided to lay a vote on the contract. You said, "Wait a minute." You wanted more information. You wanted ideas before approving that contract. Your action last week gave hope to Recycle Bank, hope that you were interested in hearing more options before you sign off on the contract before you. You want to find the best path for Lincoln to take to increase recycling in the future. So does a Recycle Bank. It's been a long and winding road. We've been traveling in Lincoln these past several years on the issue of recycling. Solid Waste Plan was completed by consultants with their recommendations. Lincoln Recycling Work Group issued their recommendations. A recycling ordinance was passed and vetoed. Then a compromise ordinance was passed. RFP was issued this summer. There's a lot of city staff time and volunteer time from interested community members having been spent on this issue. And let me praise all who have been involved and devoted so much time and talent to address this issue of recycling. And as I've mentioned, it's complex. It's not easy. I know there's a three-way split on the general direction Lincoln should take to encourage more recycling. Those who want to move forward with the pending contract, those who want to spend less, those who want to spend more for a more comprehensive program with incentives for recycling. Recycle Bank's RFP proposal cost, cost more over three years than the pending contract. Of course, with the changes being proposed, our cost would be about the same for theirs over a two-year period. So, that kinda changed our dynamic, too. Our thinking was it was a three-year contract. So, I think we can compete on the cost side if it's over a two-year period and not a three. As I said, Recycle Bank is in over three hundred and fifty cities and is by far the biggest and the best recycling education incentive program in the country. I disagree strongly with the assertion made in the memo you've received that Carson Global is the best qualified and provided the most comprehensive program among the four bidders. Their qualifications and the comprehensiveness of the program really doesn't compare to Recycle Bank's. A lot of what you heard is reinventing the wheel that Recycle Bank's already invented. They've done the research. They have the background. You've talked about other cities. Well, there's nobody out there anywhere close to Recycle Bank in those cities. They have the experience, and they, they can apply the situation in Lincoln to that experience across the country. But Carson Global was the low bidder, and we recognize that. But again, that may be complicated by the changes in the, the two-year versus three-year. Recycle Bank bid was a little over four hundred and fifty thousand. So, if you're talking eight hundred and fifty thousand over two years, we're pretty close to that number. I acknowledge the contract before you's a safe path down the middle. There was a process that was followed. It is close to the amount previously budgeted. Maybe the safe path, but is it the best path? Some have objected to spending that much money, but some have objected to spending that much money in the way outlined in the contract. Today, Recycle Bank is among those who are concerned about spending that much money in the way outlined in the pending contract. So, we're, I'm here to suggest something completely different, to quote Monty Python. Rather than spend eight hundred and fifty thousand on more meetings on recycling
A minute.
and spend nothing on incentives to truly motivate people to recycle, we suggest a partnership between the City of Lincoln, the Waste Haulers of Lincoln, and Recycle Bank that would also add another component. This is the new idea, recycling container availability to every homeowner that does not now have one. The ordinance you previously passed will require every hauler to offer recycling. Providing recycling containers to every homeowner will be expensive. They cost about fifty dollars apiece for the big ones. I am told there are around eighty thousand single-family and duplex homes in Lincoln. We believe most Lincoln households do not now have recycling containers. We are talking about potentially several million dollars to supply recycling containers to Lincoln's households. Recycle Bank has found making such containers available to homeowners is the key to recycling success in other cities. In Phoenix, they just released a study just a few days ago, that's where Recycle Bank is, that shows that they are experiencing eighty-plus percent recapture of corrugated cardboard.
Mayor Wesley, do you have anything more you'd like to say?
Yeah, I'd like to say that we, we have an idea. You, you delayed the vote to get new ideas. We have a new idea, and we'd like the chance, hopefully, after another delay, to come in here and, and make a proposal to you that you should consider that we think would be the best path to encouraging recycling.
Are there questions? John?
Good to see you, Mayor Wesley. You mentioned the two-year, and I was a little confused, and maybe staff needs to explain that. I think it's still a three-year contract, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, now, and then now they're cutting it to just one, and I'm not real...
Perhaps we get clarification, so we're all in the same wavelength.
There was an article in the news that we were looking at some alternatives for the contract length, and, and that wasn't possible. Our law department said it wasn't possible for us to change the way the, we put the bid out there in a certain way for a three-year contract, and that's the way we had to go forward. So, right now, we're really considering just a three-year contract.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that.
And if I understand, the law department said stay with the three, otherwise you'd have to rebid it. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, and perhaps that's what Mayor Wesley's suggesting. I want to go back to this Recycle Bank and refresh our memories again on what it did bid. I think you said eight, how much did it bid on its, to this?
It was, it was about four hundred and fifty thousand a year, so...
And did that include containers?
No, that's kind of a new idea. They've come up with a financing mechanism. They just decided that that's a key to encouraging recycling. So, they've come up with a new financing mechanism, and they'd like to make Lincoln the first place where they apply it, to try to see if we can get containers to people, which will make it so much easier. It's all about barriers. People, we want convenience. So, having a container, and I've got one, I recycle, just throwing stuff in there so much easier than it used to be. You had the little things, and you hauled them out to the curb, and... So, we think that's, that's an option we have not offered in the past, but would be included if we had a chance to talk to you about it.
Okay. Other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next testifier.
My name is Doug Biggerstaff. I actually came today to possibly testify on another item coming up, but we have, our company, we employ sixty-some employees, and we've been recycling for over fifty years. Cardboard for the last twenty and plastic for the last ten. And we have two and a half part-time employees, and I say half because the fourth generation, my grandson works summers on high school break, so... I, I think you'd be really hard-pressed, unless somebody just moved to Lincoln in the last year, not to know about this. And I'm not sure about spending all that money on education. I would back off to match the grant at the most, and there are a lot of other places to spend that money. I know there, there's, and I've talked to Roy about this in the past, but there's an embarrassment on North Forty-Eighth, North of Superior Street. My daughter started playing ball out there in the eighties. That road has been patched, 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 and there are thousands of people from not only Lincoln, but out of the city, out of state, that come from early spring to late, late fall. And it's a roller coaster, all the way to Doris Bear Park, which is a nonprofit-run park that's taken care of by volunteers. So, I don't know if you've ever driven out there, but drive out there sometime and just look.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next testifier, please.
Hello, my name is Robert Way. I live at eight zero one Elavato Avenue in Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm actually, I came here to understand a couple of things, and I would, is it permissible for me to ask a couple of questions, because I'm a little confused right now?
Get questions, and we can have staff answer them.
How much is this going to cost?
Why don't you list your questions, and we have a staff member here who will answer your questions. Just go ahead and say, say...
Who has the choice to renew after the three-year period?
Okay, to start with, we're talking about the base contract that was, or the cost that came in. The total cost for that contract was six hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and sixty-two. And of that, two hundred and twenty-five thousand is an N.D.Q. grant, and three hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars are city funds from our solid waste operations fund.
And who has the choice to renew after three years?
For renewal, it would also be a multi-year contract, so it would come before council for approval.
And I wasn't, this is probably just incompetence on my part, but I was not able to get a copy of this new contract, though I kinda tried a little bit. And I, so I don't know the answer to the question, will there be direct mail in this new contract?
This is, I think that is part of one of the options they could use. They may not necessarily use that as one of the means of getting ahold of folks, but that's what they're actually going to look at, do the information to figure out what strategies work the best.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next testifier, please.
Could I, could I ask this gentleman a question?
Sure.
You asked, sir, about direct mail. Did you have any thoughts on direct mail?
I think I expressed those thoughts in the last council meeting. I just, it just seems weird to me, but maybe people know better than me.
Well, the newspaper picks you up on that, so, okay.
Hi, my name's Chelsea Johnson. I'm here representing the Nebraska League of Conservation Voters. Lincoln's current recycling rate, as I think was mentioned earlier, is around twenty-two percent. And more than forty percent of what now goes into our valuable landfill space can be recycled and made into useful products. NLCV supported the city council's decision earlier this year to implement new standards on what can go into our landfill, as well as increasing the number of drop-off sites and the funds that were allocated for recycling education. We were active in the initial Recycle Lincoln campaign and found that there truly is bipartisan support for increasing recycling in our community. However, there's also a lack of information as to how to recycle and confusion as to what can and cannot be recycled. These questions, on behalf of our residents, can, can really limit the recycling program that the ordinance tries to, you know, accomplish. I urge you to uphold your commitments to increasing recycling and educating the public so all residents have the tools that they need to meet, to meet our recycling goals and the goals that you had earlier this year when... goals that you had earlier this year when implementing the ordinance and the education funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Chelsea? Thank you. Next testifier, please.
My name is Lori Blum, and I live at one five three zero North Eighty-seventh Street. First of all, I want to thank you for moving forward with the cardboard ban in our landfills and also considering a more comprehensive recycling program. I'm happy to be part of a city that is looking ahead and taking steps to improve our environment. I now encourage you to accept the contract of Carson and Company Global to educate and prepare our community for what will be, for some, quite a challenge, quite a change. I had the opportunity to meet Jamie Carson and several of her colleagues when I participated in Enviro Run earlier this year. It's a free monthly community event hosted by Carson Company Global, which included an hour run or walk, followed by speakers, discussions, and networking on topics relevant to sustainability in our community. It was exciting to hear about the organizations and projects that are enhancing Lincoln's environmental quality. Jamie and her team were also present at the Earth Day Festival, educating others about recycling and environmental awareness. So if you award Carson and Company with this contract, we will see their faces in our community, not just their name on a webpage or on, in an email message. I also have some involvement with Recycle Bank, which is being considered for this project as well. I am registered with them, and I was, when I was signed up with my recycling pickup company. Recycle Bank gives out points for reporting that you recycled. They also send out emails with information about recycling in general. And if you take the time to open up the email and pick an article, then go to the website, log in, read the article, then you get more points. But honestly, some of our email inboxes get so cluttered that we sometimes don't take the time to open up and read them. And I, I thought my company that picked up my recycling would report when I recycled, but it was up to me to take the time to log in and report that I recycled. The rewards usually involved spending more than what you were receiving, such as getting ten dollars off after you spent thirty dollars. It wasn't very motivating to me. I had never met anyone from Recycle Bank until now. I haven't seen them out in the community. And I believe that people should be motivated to recycle, not because they're getting some reward, but because they see the benefits to our community and our environment. And I think Carson and Company is the organization to carry this out. They know the Lincoln community. They're out in it, and I feel they will figure out the best way to reach everybody. Research is important to pinpoint the reasons why we don't all recycle, and from there, they can move forward to determine what will motivate us. Through education and marketing, hopefully citizens will not only work to keep cardboard out of landfill, but to reduce the amount of waste produced overall. Thank you.
Okay, questions? John?
Yes, and I'm glad you're remembering to sign in, too. Yes, Ms. Baum. Interesting on your comment about the emails you had received from the recycle bank-
Uh-huh.
-and the steps you would go through. And we've also heard the gentleman before you talk about, do you really, or last time, too, he brought up, do you want to send out more paper to encourage people to recycle? So interesting situation. Social media seems to be the thing of today with all the millennials and all of us. I mean, we've got the email accounts and so forth. So wouldn't you, with what you just said on emails and so forth, I'm just wondering, with social media, that undoubtedly would be part of this program, how would that be different?
I think with social media, people seem to be more active, especially the younger community with social media. And I don't feel that Carson and Company is, you know, would only rely on that. I think just getting out there in the community would help also bring that education about, to answer your question.
Well, and I, of course, we don't really know what they would do at this point in that, but it just seems like to get to the most people, that's one way, and that's what industry uses for a lot of things. So I'm just kind of curious that you didn't follow up on the emails in the-
I did follow, I would follow up on some, but, you know, just not all of them. So I'm just wondering if the point system that they used would be motivating to enough people. It just, it didn't, and I'm a recycler, no matter if I'm getting points or not, I just see the benefit to the environment and the community. So I guess, you know, maybe I need that motivation. I was interested in some of the articles that did come up, but like I said, sometimes we get, just our email boxes get so full that, okay, this is maybe one I'm going to pass on this time, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Next testifier.
I got a haircut since I was up here last time, so it's important to identify myself. Jesse Starida, three thousand and five, South Nineteenth Street, six eight five zero two. Twenty-two percent, twenty-six million dollars. As the Lincoln City Council considers its support of the recycling education program, please chew on these two statistics. According to the most up-to-date waste characterization study, Lincoln's recycling rate is twenty-two percent. As we've heard tonight, the national average is thirty-five percent. Clearly, we live in a time when it's not possible for every individual to recycle every item they part with. If there is a person out there, I'd love to meet them. But what's just as clear is that we can do better, which is, of course, what led the council to pass the landfill ban on cardboard this January. In my interpretation, part of the hesitation voiced two weeks ago by both citizens and council members revolved around the contract's boldness. Boldness of cost, boldness of language, boldness of methods, perhaps. Many of these concerns had a legitimate basis. But I'd like to argue that what's easy to overlook is how bold we already are. Twenty-six million dollars. According to our Public Works and Utilities Department, this is the combined cost of closing the current landfill and opening a new adjacent site, which was reported in June, those statistics. Excuse me. In June, the city announced that the landfill is filling up faster than expected, even with increased recycling efforts. So the landfill that was originally expected to be full by 2032 could now be full in about ten years. So the argument that I'm making is that boldness is our current waste management reality, not the three hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars for the recycling education contract that's before you. Where the education contract is a careful and methodical step in the right direction, a twenty-two percent recycling rate and twenty-six million dollar price tag for business as usual boldly goes in just the wrong one. So not recycling costs a lot of money, both to the individual citizen and to our city's image, which I think we all cherish, as a vibrant, attractive place for future businesses, talent, and growth. I hope the recycling, excuse me, I hope the council will take a thoughtful step and approve Carson and Company Global and Verdis Group's recycling education program contract this afternoon, this evening, wherever we are right now. And just finally, in light of events this weekend in Charlottesville and elsewhere, I would just like to thank, extend a thank you to all of the council members and city employees here who work tirelessly to promote civic and civil dialogue within our community. Thank you.
Other questions for Jesse?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next, our public hearing ordinance-
Hold on, go ahead.
Jeff Patrick, City Attorney. We went through claims. You called for anyone that had a claim. No one came forward. My understanding is Mr. Kerwin is here, and if the council would allow him to be heard, he'd like to be heard.
I move we reopen the cycling discussion, or the claims.
Claims. Second, do we have a second? From Cindy? It's been moved to second, and we reopen claims. Discussion, please call the roll.
Kayla Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Hello, my name is Bradley Kerwin. I'm from Fremont, Nebraska. I have a claim against the City of Lincoln. I was pulled over on March eleventh to a revoked license, but my license wasn't revoked. And during that time, I had a thirty-day impound on my car. And between the, from the thirty-day impound, I couldn't afford to get my car out after the thirty days. I went through trial. The state of Nebraska dismissed my charges because I never broke the law. And I'm just asking for the value of my car. Not necessarily the value of my car, just the, because I only paid five hundred dollars for my car. And it was four hundred and eighty dollars or four hundred and ninety dollars to get the car out after the thirty-day period. And that's it.
Other questions? Cindy?
So I'm sorry, exactly what were you asking for?
The value of my car, which is-
Five hundred dollars or four eighty?
Five hundred, four hundred and eighty. It don't, it's up to you guys. It don't matter to me.
Is your vehicle still there?
It's gone. It was sold. That's, yeah.
Carl?
Do you have any kind of documentation as to the value of your vehicle?
Oh, I, Kelly bluebooked it, and they sold it for two hundred and seventy-five dollars because there was a nine hundred dollar towing fee amount because it sat past thirty days. They sold it in May. They sent me a letter stating that the title was signed over. Because I went there after my thirty-day period, and I couldn't afford to get it out. And then I figured, once I went through court, I would just get it out. When I was in court, I asked them, could I get my car out of impound? And they said, sure, that's fine. It should be free. I called the impound lot, and they said, we already sold your car. And then I've been told to come talk to you guys.
Other questions? John?
Could you give states of these different things, when you were pulled over and-
I was pulled over the eleventh of March, and my car was sold. My car was sold on May twenty-seventh, and I got my charges dismissed the tenth of July.
Okay. So to review, you were cited?
I was driving with an interlock in my car. The cop came up to my door, said, you're driving on revocation. I said, no, I'm not. Said, well, our computer shows that you are. Go to jail, get out. They put a thirty-day hold on my car from that point on. I have a letter from the DMV stating that what I was doing wasn't, I wasn't in the wrong. So when I went to court, I tried to show the prosecutor the piece of paper from the DMV, and she said, we'll just take it to trial. And we went all the way up until two days before trial, and she decided to dismiss the charges because she never looked at the piece of paper from the DMV, because she wanted me to plead to it.
During that, during that period of time, they sold your car?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? John?
You said the police were saying there was an interlock notice, or explain that to us.
I was driving legally on an interlock, but he said that I was driving on points. I didn't have enough points on my license, and therefore I was driving on revoke license, is what he said. But I have a piece of paper from the DMV stating that I wasn't driving on a revocation at that time. So it was just a confusion, is what happened. And then, so from, from March eleventh all the way to July tenth, my car sat in impound. Well, it got sold in May, but from March to July, I was going through trial and had the charges dismissed.
Okay. Staff questions? You can have a seat.
Or sign in to all your-
Yes, please sign in on the pink sheet.
Jeff Patrick, City Attorney. Questions?
Could you give your results of your, your side of the-
I would not, I think, disagree with much of anything he said. It's true that he was pulled over and ticketed for driving under revocation. We now have a policy in Lincoln where if you're driving under revocation, we do take the car for thirty days. That was instituted because of an ongoing problem we had with a number of drivers who never got reinstated, continued to drive while under revocation. And we were just pulling them over all the time. And you pull over them over, and you take their car, and then they're motivated to actually get the driver's license, get insurance, drive legally. And so I think Tom Cassidy would tell you it's been a fairly effective way of reducing the number of people driving in Lincoln without either licenses or insurance. In this case, when he was pulled over, the computer system that LPD relies upon did show that he was driving under revocation. He was due to come up in court approximately thirty days after he was ticketed. His county attorney case drug out a long time, much longer than these cases would have. His car was sold at auction for two hundred and seventy-five dollars on May twenty-seventh. He would have had an opportunity, if he would have, I guess, known the proper procedure, to go into his car right away after it was impounded. I'm not blaming him. I mean, most of us would not know what the proper procedure was. Living out of town, it would be more difficult and inconvenient for him to follow up and see if there was a way of getting his car out. But we did pull him over. We followed the best of our knowledge. We, being LPD, giving him the ticket. We followed what our current procedure is in impounding the car. The car, the towing fee and the impound fee is not collected, does not go to the City of Lincoln. It's a private contract that we have, and that money goes to them. And they would come in and tell you if asked that they lost money on the deal because they had impound fees that they were unable to collect. And unable to collect part of that, that's why they put the car up for auction, collected two hundred and seventy-five dollars when they were owed over nine hundred dollars. And so I think it is an unfortunate situation. I feel bad for him that he lost his car this way. He's not the first person, unfortunately, that basically has lost his car because he was unable to get it out of impound quickly enough. I mean, there's all kinds of situations where people's cars are impounded, and they end up being sold for cost because they can't afford to get them out. And it is unfortunate. And some people end up being afoot because of it. But I would suggest to you that I don't see how the City of Lincoln was at fault or negligent in this circumstance.
Cindy, then, John?
So is a city municipal code that caused the car to be towed when he was pulled over?
I believe so. I believe so.
I guess, Mr. Patrick, you mentioned there was a glitch in the computer system or something. The city followed. The LPD would have learned or not, or learned incorrectly that he should-
What I can tell you is that the SEJAS, the system that the LPD relied upon, showed that his license was revoked. What I can't tell you, in part because his record has been sealed because he was not convicted, is exactly why that glitch or why the SEJAS system showed that he was revoked when he was driving legally under interlock device. I have no reason not to believe him when he says he was driving legally with an interlock, and why the system showed that he was revoked on points. I don't know that.
Have you reviewed personally the letters or the papers he has with him?
No, I have not.
Did your staff?
I don't know that. I think we asked if he could show them to us. And to the last time, I had a conversation with Ms. Elliott about it. He hadn't showed her anything.
Could we have, did the other gentleman come up for another question?
Sure.
Possible revocation. Yes, would you go over again how you presented letters or something? Sounds like there's a confusion.
Yeah, so I went to court, and I told her, hey, I have this from the DMV stating what you guys are charging me for. Point revocation, it never happened. She said, well, since that, it's only a point revocation. It's actually a second offense, driving on revocation. Plead out to the point revocation, and I won't enhance it to second offense, driving on revocation. Said I never broke the law. Let's take it to trial. Went through trial, called the, called the towing agency. I couldn't do nothing to get my car out. I actually had to fill out a piece of papers, and the technician can get the interlock out of the car. And all the way up until July, she was telling me, I'm just going to enhance it. I'm just going to enhance it. Better plea out to this, better plea out to this. And then, two days before trial, she decided to dismiss the charges.
And that was the county attorney, or-
Yeah, that was the prosecutor.
It was the county attorney, yes.
And what was the date of the letter that said you were-
The letters, they're labeled the tenth.
Of which month?
Of March. And I was pulled over the eleventh of March. Of March. And I was pulled over the eleventh of March.
Okay. Any further questions?
Mr. Patrick, if there was a motion made to reimburse the four hundred and eighty dollars even though the city got none of the two hundred and seventy, which I can appreciate out of the contracts we have-
The city didn't get anything.
Right.
Okay.
But it was the city's police department who apparently had faulty computer information.
Uh, the city police department relied upon SIGIS, which is information put in there by the state.
So, in a case like that, when government makes a mistake, even though you have the tort claims act and so forth, isn't there some liability to rectify its mistake?
Well, I, I think if you say the government made a mistake, um, that's really my, my issue. My question is, did the city, did a city employer, employee, whether it was a police officer or Parks or Star Trek or whoever, did somebody that, the reports to the city make a mistake? And I can't find any evidence that the LPD officer was negligent in any way in giving him a ticket.
So, I guess my question would be, if this had happened to him in another town, would his car have been impounded?
I can't tell you the answer to that. I mean-
But the ordinance under which his car was impounded is a city ordinance.
I believe so. The, the ticket that he received was under the state statute. That's a separate issue. That's why it was a county attorney rather than the city attorney's office. That's probably why he was not able to talk to a prosecutor right away and say, here's my paperwork and, and get it resolved quickly. And that's just this difference in caseload and approach and so on.
John?
You know, and like businesses, for example, when they have collections, they generally figure, I'm going to have ten percent loss or something, whatever. Uh, analogizing that to the city, we adopted this new ordinance, which I think is, uh, Public Safety Director Cassidy said has helped us. That's great. Along the way, perhaps you have some, uh, situation maybe like this that arises. And could that be analogous to just the loss of collections that, well, we, overall, the program's working. We never, don't necessarily make anything on the program anyway. But it's helping get better enforcement or better response to the ordinance. And therefore, do we just look at this as something that it's the cost of doing business?
Well, there are certainly equities involved here. Uh, and, and I can't say that, um, Mr. Kerwin, um, was anything but a, a, a victim of unfortunate set of circumstances. And it's certainly true that the City of Lincoln played a role in that, uh, situation. Um, like I said, I don't think we did anything negligent. But I do understand why, uh, certainly I feel bad for him and I could understand why the council would. Um, and if you said, well, you know, the, the value, the fair market value under the sheriff's auction was two hundred and seventy-five dollars and we would compensate for that. As a lawyer, I look at precedent and my question to you is, if he came here from Omaha and said, my Tesla was taken and it took me nine months to get it figured out and, and the bill is, you know, five thousand dollars, the same situation, would you, would you compensate that? Because I think the equities would be approximately the same. This case, it's a relatively small amount, maybe easier to compensate him. Um, that's just something for you to consider. But if you're saying, I think he was a victim of unfortunate circumstances, I think LPD may have been able to do something about that, I want to try to balance the scales a little bit. I think that would be a decision that this council could make.
Well, I think somebody owned a Tesla would probably afford a better lawyer. We would hope, we would hope. Benny and then Leary.
Jeff, I think I understood you say that the, the LPD officer acted in good faith based on the information from the state system?
Yes.
So, would the gentleman have recourse to addresses with the state since they're-
You know, it's a, it's a timing, perhaps a timing issue and I'm not sure why, uh, the state system didn't reflect the fact that he had an interlock, although the fact that he received a letter, was pulled over the next day, may indicate that if he'd been pulled over two days later, information might have been more correct. I don't know. Uh, that's not information that I'm privy to.
I understand. Thank you.
Leary?
Mr. Kerwin, did you say that you were put in jail as a result?
Yes.
How long were you there?
I went to jail, bailed out and I got my bond back. And I have, uh, a piece of paper from the courts. This is a piece of paper stating that they sealed all documents. And, uh, I have this where it says they, uh, dismissed, they dismissed the driving under suspension, license revoked on points. Additional entries or record dismissed without prejustice, that state's cost. I, I was, before I left, when they dropped my charges, I said, hey, can I go get my car now? And they said, yep, should be free. Said, alright. Called, said, hey, we sold your car. Called property, called property. Hey, call the county attorney, call the county attorney, call the district attorney, call the district attorney, call the city attorney, send a letter to the city attorney, show up to the city council.
How, how long were you in jail or did you-
Just a couple hours.
Just a couple hours? And how long before you called about your car that was impounded?
I, I tried to get it right away.
March eleventh?
I tried to get my car right away and they told me it was on a thirty day impound, on a thirty day police hold. So, so after the thirty days went by, it was, I showed up on the thirty-second day and it was four hundred and eighty or four hundred and ninety-four dollars, it was one of the two. My car Blue Books for eight hundred dollars. It's a nineteen ninety-two Acura Integra, two hundred and seventy thousand miles on it.
Okay. Any further questions?
I just feel like I want to hear Jeff address this issue of the thirty day impound. So, so because of the lag time in determining that he was in fact, that he hadn't broken the law, the charges were dismissed in July.
Yep.
So, the lag time between the thirty days following the impound and those charges being dismissed, you, you described them as being an unusual set of circumstances that would take that long? Is that, can you elaborate on that?
Well, yeah, I mean, his first court hearing would have been in April. Uh, and I think what he stated is that he showed up in court with evidence that he actually was driving legally at the time, uh, and didn't get the prosecutor to, to really focus on that. Could have been, at least the criminal charge could have been dismissed on that day, presumably.
Okay, but the-
Of course, it still would have been thirty days in impound.
The impound, thirty days, that's city ordinance?
Yes.
John?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, when we get to the voting session, I'm gonna make a motion that we award him four hundred and eighty dollars and I'm gonna encourage our city attorney to go to the county attorney and say, you guys screwed up and prosecuting this so long. It's not the first time I've heard of this happening and they need to be less zealous in some of these cases.
Although, and, and I'm not disagreeing, uh, you still would have had the thirty day impound. And so, I think for his purposes, it still would have been a very expensive problem. So, thank you.
Thank you?
Thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
All right, next are our public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions. I'll call items thirteen and fourteen together. They are adopting a new chapter twenty-four point twelve to the Lincoln Municipal Code to be called the Lincoln Plumbing Code, incorporating the twenty-twelve edition of the Uniform Plumbing Code as amended and repealing chapter twenty-four point ten in its entirety and adopting the plumbing systems permit fee schedules for the plumbing code.
Chad Blaha, Building and Safety Department, um, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and council members for hearing us again about these codes. Uh, what you have before you with this first group is what we, uh, will refer to as the Lincoln Plumbing Code. And I explained last week at the pre-council bri- uh, briefly about the process for these code adoptions and I'll say that again for our listeners at home and those in the audience. We have a, a couple of citizen groups that staff works closely with. These groups are made up of contractors that are within the industry for the code. In this case, it was the plumbing contractors. Um, they, they, uh, give a lot of their free time, um, to review these codes and we greatly value their input and, um, their ownership of the code that they use every day. And, uh, I just wanted to acknowledge that ahead of time. So, each of the items that are in the ordinance and the resolution that represent changes from the published code were reviewed by this group and approved by a majority vote in, in a, a series of meetings that, that, that was held jointly with, uh, the task force and, and, uh, city staff. Yeah, so that's kind of the process that, that we go through. There's the task force and then a, a second body called the Code Study Committee that, that I, um, explained a little bit about last, uh, last week, but won't go into too much detail on that. Um, what we are adopting here, like, uh, like was just read is the two thousand and twelve Uniform Plumbing Code and, um, and its fee table. Some of the highlights for that, um, include, uh, a few fee changes and there really weren't many highlights. Um, but there were a few fee changes. Um, let's see here, there was a total of about ten or so fee adjustments. Three or, three or four represented actual increases. Uh, three of them were clarifications on, um, the previous code adoption. So, there wasn't an actual change made, just clarification made. And then, it looks like three of them were brand new, brand new fees that, uh, we were including as a result of changes in the code itself. Uh, the increases were the Board of Appeals application. It went from two hundred and fifty to five hundred. Um, and then, actually, that was the, and then the, the, the license registration fees for, uh, master plumber, journeyman and apprentice all went up by varying degrees. Uh, master went from fifty to seventy-five, journeyman from forty to fifty, and apprentice from twenty to twenty-five. So, um, smaller increases been increases nonetheless. The brand new fees, uh, represent new items that are included, like I said. Um, uh, one of them is med gas facilities. That is an item that has been typically deleted from the published code. The group decided that it was an important enough item to, to not delete and it needs to have its, uh, needs to have its, um, its, uh, scrutiny and, uh, and inspection, um, by city staff. And so, that item is a brand new item. It's a hundred dollars for the first ten openings and then, uh, ten for each opening after that. And if you want specifics on what those type of facilities entail, I'll have, uh, might ask staff to come up and talk about some of the technical details for some of these things. Um, the other item, the other, uh, kind of a new item, it's kind of actually a decreased item, is, uh, single fixture replacements. Uh, to explain that a little bit, uh, right now, if you have a dishwasher that you need to replace and that's the only thing that you need to, that's the only work that you're doing, you have to come in and get a full permit, thirty-five dollar, is it thirty-five or forty? Thirty-five dollar minimum permit fee and there is a required inspection that goes along with that. So, um, the homeowner has to arrange to be home during working hours and get an inspection for that. We have received, can I take some more time? Okay. We have received calls from, uh, a council member or two asking about those, those situations and also multiple homeowners, um, about do we really need to have our dishwasher or, uh, our, uh, garbage disposal unit inspected upon replacement? So, we came up with a, what we think is, um, a good, uh, good attempt at relieving some of that inconvenience. Uh, we are dropping, um, those items from our standard, uh, fee schedule and inspection. We're dropping those from thirty-five dollars down to fifteen dollars each time. So, we're still requiring a permit and I'll explain why that's, why we feel that's important. But we no longer are requiring an inspection be arranged for each and every replacement. We will spot inspect those, um, yeah, a certain number of those installments or installations over the course of the year, however many install, or installations that fifteen dollars, you know, a piece buys us, I suppose. And we would look to, uh, reanalyze that at the end of the year to see how far that gets us. And the reason we feel it's important to still require a permit and spot inspection is to, you know, maintain the, uh, the quality installations by our licensed contractors. And then also, uh, we get calls from prospective home buyers in Lincoln asking about permit history. Um, and, uh, you know, a number of times, a number of times throughout the year. And they are looking for work that was done in the house that, or the work looking to buy. We've have, we get calls from insurance companies as well, uh, working on claims, looking for permit history data. And so, we feel that it's still important to get the permit on records, um, but still, uh, try and provide some relief to the scheduling inconvenience of, of the inspections for the homeowners. So, there's, so there's that. Uh, the other added fee would be a sump pump piping fee. Um, talked a little bit about that last week. Uh, sump pumps, um, have been amended out of the plumbing code or the piping for the sump pumps have been amended out of the plumbing code in, in, in years past. We were approached by, uh, other city staff, public works to, uh, maybe see if there was a way to, to help out with proper install, installation of sump pump piping and, um, we, um, agreed that, or the task force members that, that were consulted, um, uh, agreed that, you know, we have no problem requiring that discharge pipe be permitted and inspected on new construction permits or when a sump pump is being put into an existing house, that that piping is properly discharged and inspected to the exterior of the house. That is an eight dollar fee, um, uh, for that one. Um, let's see, that's the, that's the extent of the, the fee changes. We added some, um, professional development hours and for journeyman, or we increased, we added the professional development hours for journeyman and then increased the hours required for master plumbers. And, uh, I guess that, that really represents the, 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 the primary changes in, 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 in the plumbing code. There wasn't much. I guess I will, I'll address the, the separation of the fees from, um, in an ordinance form compared to the, or I mean, resolution form rather than in the ordinance form. Um, traditionally, the fee table is just lumped right in with the ordinance and along with all the other requirements. We decided to pull those out for a couple of reasons. One, with an ordinance, we can't set a future effective date. And one of the items that was really important for our task force, our contractors, was to give a, a period of time so that they could work on existing contracts that they, that they had bid, um, under assum- assuming the previous, um, the previous fees. If they, um, if they, uh, you know, happen to be fees that, that increased. And so, that gives us, a resolution gives us the flexibility to do that. It also, having them separated, we feel is a more, uh, efficient way of looking at fees more frequently. So, instead of going every three years or five years on the code adoption cycle, we can look at them more frequently, maybe, you know, every two years with the budget and, uh, presumably lower, lower changes to those fees. So, that was our intention with, with that part of it. So, that's the plumbing. And I think we split them up, so.
All right. Questions for Chad? John?
I like your idea of doing the sporadic inspections and so forth. You know, normally there's that label that's put or by the inspector on the appliance or whatever it is that's inspected. How does that work without the inspection? If you're doing twenty-five percent of them, on the other seventy-five percent, do you mail it out or so, or say, sit down the road, someone would come in and inspect, say, a home sale or something and there, there's nothing there, but they were under that new system?
It's a very good question. Rex, have we thought about that?
No.
Um, I think that, uh, that would be something that, I, thank you, John, for bringing that up. Um, that is something that we could look at, uh, providing in a, in a mailing. I think the important part is to have it in our, in our system because, you know, I know in, 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 in our house, we, we have a sticker. It says something, but it's unreadable. But I can go into the, into our-
It's the signature you can't read.
I can go into our, 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 our system and know that it has been inspected and know that it was there.
Well, I just don't want you to impound my garbage disposal for thirty days and sell it for five cents.
It's not what we're in here for.
Okay. Any questions? Other questions? Thank you. Next item, or would anyone else like to testify on this item? Please come forward.
I'd like Ms. Crawford to join me up here, if possible.
Well?
My name's Seth Crawford, eight forty Robert Road. Uh, my questions. Continuing at hours, you want to raise masters to ten hours. Now, I understand you as an inspector hold a grade six as well as other plumbers, but not all of us want a grade six. Grade six is so you test backflows, ladies and gentlemen. Woo-hoo. I don't have the desire to, neither do I want to. I want to keep with my six hours. Now, I tell you how I get my six hours. I pay an inspector- I pay an inspector, cash money, okay? I can go and I can join IATMO, which he boosters, and he's a member of. Is it true, Rex, that you left and became a union member so you could booster yourself in IATMO?
In order to further myself, yes, I became a union member.
Okay. IATMO does not do anything for me, okay? We had the same plumbing code for years, years and years and years, which he'll tell you. He's been with the city for 28 years.
I think this is, this court, where you're cross-examining a city staff member is not appropriate.
Okay, not appropriate, okay.
So would you sit down, please?
Ten hours compared to six. How do you want me to accomplish that? You want me to join these different memberships? IATMO, I got to pay. Now, I did try to attain how much comp time we've given him to go to, oh, Alaska, New Orleans, Las Vegas, New York City, Albuquerque, Maui, you know. Be really nice. I don't want to be a part of this. I want to plum, I want to do my job. I'm self-employed. I go to work, I work. I don't have a problem learning the code. Nobody teaches an individual code class anymore. Well, not continuing ed. They teach a plumbing code class, you can go sit in the same gas code class year after year after year after year. Get your six hours. Now we're doing 10. I just want to point out, this will affect you guys when you call one of us dirty plumbers. Because think of those shops that have multiple journeymen, multiple masters. They're going to be paying for all their employees to get these continuing ed hours. So I'll tell you what your plumbing rate's going to do. It's going to go up. It's going to go up. As far as Mr. Camp, you liking this dishwasher deal? If you want to drop dishwashers, drop dishwashers. Do I like the idea of a city, the city getting fifteen dollars for doing nothing besides documenting that I was in the house? If you can't keep a receipt, then you don't need to keep it. If you look, yes, they have done remarkably well. They were in the red for some years, right? They're still inspecting water heaters from five, six years ago. That tells me that you're not caught up on your workload. So you claiming that money because it's coming in, but you haven't done your job. Does that not make sense, people?
Okay, are there questions?
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Next testifier.
Do I need to do this again?
No.
Okay. My name's Doug Biggerstaff. I was on the task force along with, I think there were six or seven of us, something like that. When he talked about the cost of doing those things, we have, I think we have six masters and 30 journeymen. I'm happy to pay them to go learn. We're sending our plumbing and heating guys both off to classes all the time. Our industry is becoming more and more technical all the time. And granted, if all you're doing is a two-bathroom house every day, day after day after day, it gets kind of monotonous. But everything, almost every job we do anymore, there's computer equipment that is part of our plumbing systems. And I want my guys to know how to run it, how to fix it, all those kind of things, and I'm happy to pay them. And I was one of the proponents of the journeyman because I'm happy to do it myself, but I want the guys that actually are doing the work to get that education.
Okay. Benny and then John.
Mr. Biggerstaff, thank you for coming up, and thank you, Mr. Chair. So these additional hours, are they easily available? Are there clinics held regularly?
Absolutely. Our suppliers have free classes they put on at night. There are, I think we have seven wholesale plumbing suppliers in town. And at least once or twice a month, they'll have an hour or a two-hour free, even fee you, to come to their, listen to their speaker. We have a local plumbing association, and you have to join that, but it costs you $10. And we offer an hour a month, seven, eight months out of the year, of continuing education there. We have IATMO. That's very inexpensive also. And, yeah, it's very easy to get your hours.
Well, a couple of follow-ups. So that was, the previous testifiers led us to believe there was barriers and it was difficult to get it. You're saying it's not that difficult?
Not at all.
And the second one, would you tell me what IATMO is? I don't know what that means.
International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials, which, he's official.
Thank you, yeah. Nothing else.
John?
Benny covered it, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Doug?
All right, thanks.
And would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next up, call items 15 through 18. They're all in regards to the Lincoln Mechanical Code.
Same thing regarding process, except insert mechanical contractors instead of plumbing contractors. And we do have a member from that group here as well. And I, once again, they take pride in their role in shaping these codes, as evidenced by them sitting here tonight to the end, to be present. I want to acknowledge that. So with the mechanical codes, there are a couple of codes. There's the Lincoln Mechanical Code and the Fuel Gas Code that are being represented. And then also within this group is the Hydronics Code, and I'll handle that first because that kind of also dovetails into plumbing as well. And once again, I'll let the experts explain what hydronics are, if anybody wants to know. But it's a chapter within each of those disciplines that it kind of crosses over. And previously, each code had its own requirements that were slightly different. And so both groups had their own, doing the same thing with slightly different requirements. So with this code adoption cycle, we decided to try and bring those together. And what we decided on was pulling that section out and creating its own hydronics code for the city of Lincoln that both groups will utilize for their requirements from an installation standpoint and a fee standpoint. So that's the hydronics. From the mechanical code side of things, there was a couple of fee, a couple of fee changes as well, smaller. There was electric furnaces went from 30 to 35. Condensing units, air conditioners, went from 30 to 35. And then new duct installation. There previously was not an item for that. It, that went to, that was included as $20. And then each additional system after, after 20 systems. So what that means, if it's an apartment building that has 25 individual systems, that'd be $25. So any residential, any residential project is $20. Board of Appeals for Mechanical went up from 100, from 100 dollars to 250. And master contractor, master contractor exam fee went up from 150 to 500. That's a substantial jump. It had not been changed since 2011, and what that represents is an increase in cost that we incur to proctor those exams. We have to send out for the ICC organization, purchase tests from them in order to do that, and that's where that cost comes from. And then mechanical contractor registration fee went from 250 to 350. There's also a professional development hour requirement added to the journeyman level for mechanical installers as well, the group. And these, and I do want to clarify with this, with this journeyman, this isn't these, the professional hours. That was, those were not necessarily staff-proposed items. This is the community that feels it's important for their members to stay educated on new items. And so as Doug kind of, you know, confidently stated, he feels that that's important. So the same thing happened in the mechanical group. They decided that the professional development items are important for their trade. So the bigger item with the mechanical code adoption is the requirement for sealed combustion furnaces. And I don't know, like we talked last week, there was a couple of you that were there for the last adoption cycle and have some memories of that. Basically, the high-efficiency furnaces. The code as published requires them in, for residential, for residential projects. I believe the hang-up the last time I was not here, but from what I gather, the hang-up was it was indiscriminate on what type of installation it is, whether it was a replacement. So if you have a, you know, 50-year-old house, you're putting in a sealed combustion. Or if you have a multiplex apartment building, you're changing out and putting in sealed combustion furnaces for each one of those. They took that into the consider, the group took that into consideration and decided to amend the published code. Instead of a broad brush, decided to make the requirement for new residential construction only for those sealed combustion furnaces. Now, you throw the word efficient, high efficiency out there, and you start to look at energy conserv, you kind of hear the energy conservation. And there definitely is energy conservation benefits to the homeowner for that. However, we feel and staff feels that the safety component to that requirement is more important and that is where our, where our support for that change lies. There was also, in the documentation, questions about what we call, what I call, recirculating hood frying systems. These are those self-contained frying units used that smaller restaurant-type establishments like to use. They're much cheaper than the large commercial hoods, and they promote that they, that they function just as well. The published code allows these devices. However, the Lincoln code has, Lincoln code has adopted that language out over the last couple of cycles. Predominantly, the industry feels that they are not a safe piece of equipment to have for a couple of reasons. There is a fire hazard and a health concern. The group, as again, testament to their dedication to their, to their field, they visited numerous sites where these items were reported to be utilized. And they have photos and documentation showing grease and grease residue and a number of other hazards in place. There's also, they also received complaints by some of the staff about the conditions they felt that these frying machines were provided to them. So even though it is a change to the published code, the group decided ultimately to continue to remove those. The reason it was even an issue to begin with, I asked staff and the group to consider some form of a safe requirement or method in utilizing those machines. Because we do get calls once or twice every month or so from business owners that want to utilize this piece of equipment. And so I don't know if that'll end up going away, but I wanted to have somebody look to see if there was a safe way of utilizing these. And the experts in the industry said no, so. And those are, those are the bigger items with the mechanical.
Very good. Questions on the mechanical code changes? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Anyhow, there might be a couple of gentlemen, they may want to come together, or?
Tom Hardisty, 7811 Preserve Lane, Lincoln. Chairman of the Mechanical Code Task Force, member of the Large Code Study Committee. To redirect what Mr. Biggerstaff said, we also increased continuing ed hours on our employees. We pay for those hours. We want people to be up to date, know what they're doing. As far as Chad's issues with the fryers, we did visit three different sites, looking at those things. We looked at information that was submitted by, or you could go online and get these installation instructions. Most of it had to do with maintenance. If they are not maintained, most fires in restaurants are by grease. We noticed that grease buildup even when they're trying to maintain them once a month. So again, thanks for your time and.
Thank you. Questions? Cindy?
Thank you. Thanks for coming up today, and thanks for leading the task force. Did you find most of those fryers were in, like, did I hear convenience stores rather than restaurants?
No, they were restaurants. They, you'd find them in sandwich shops, pizza places, things like that.
Okay, so there were people who are accustomed to cleaning those type of things?
There were people that were pointed to and said, you need to maintain this, and obviously it wasn't being done.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next are items 19 and 20. They are approving the transfer of funds to allow the city to pay off obligations with the Nebraska Department of Transportation on the South Beltway project and approving supplemental agreement number three between the city, Lancaster County, and the Nebraska Department of Transportation for the South Beltway project.
Hi, I'm Miki Esposito, Director of Public Works and Utilities, and it is my pleasure to present to you these two pieces of legislation relative to the South Beltway. I'd like to bring Randy Hoskins up with me, our Assistant City Engineer. And I would be remiss not to mention our two very important partners. We've got Pam Dingman, our county engineer, and also Roger Feigard from the RTSD. He's our executive director. These are our very important partners in all of this. And I think before we start in breaking everything down, this is a message of unity. This is where the county, the city, the RTSD, and the state are unified in bringing together-
You tell our viewers what RTSD stands for?
The Railroad Transportation Safety District. Where we're unified in working together to solve a really complex problem. And we were faced with that problem in January, and so we all came together. And it's just wonderful that we've been able to reflect certainty in the amount that we're going to be paying for, but also the unity and partnership, and that's especially important in the country right now. So we just want to break this down for you a little bit more. The supplemental agreement number three, that's what memorializes our verbal commitment between the city, the county, and the Department of Transportation for that $50 million cost cap in early payment. But first, we have to move the money in the CIP, and that's Legislation 17-101. So this is to approve the transfer of funds to allow the city to pay off the obligations of $50 million over two years. And I think, let's talk through that a little bit. The funds will be advanced from previously funded projects. Those funds will then be repaid through previously identified CIP allocations for the Beltway in later years. And no project schedules will be impacted by these transfers. So we're taking from 14th Warlick and Old Chaney, 4.7 million in 2017. And in 2018, we're going to take 3 million. Northwest 48th Street, we had some project savings, and so you'll see a transfer ordinance coming forward in the coming weeks to reflect 1 million in 2017. And then the East Beltway, we will borrow 700,000 in 2017 and 2 million in 2018. The repayments then, 14th Warlick and Old Chaney will pay a little bit, close to 200,000 in 2018, 6.2 in 2019, and 1.3 in 2020. Those are with the allocations of the South Beltway dollars that we were going to receive in those years. And then the East Beltway will do repayments of 1.7 million in 2020 and 1 million in 2021. So that's the CIP detail that we're asking you to rearrange and transfer so we can make this cap an early payment obligation by September 30th of this year and September 30th of next year.
Okay, questions? Larian?
Thank you for working with our partners to try and cover this cost that went up unexpectedly and significantly. Originally, the city's portion of the local match, our 20%, was about 40 million, right? So in the last budget, that was fully funded across our six-year capital improvement project. So we were able to feel we had successfully funded it, only to learn later that the cost of the project went up. of the project went up, um, another 10 million for Lincoln. So when you're talking about moving funds around in the CIP and bumping them up early and switching them with other projects, I guess I was just hoping to get a little clarity on the delta between 40 and 50 million. If you only had 40 million programmed and you're bumping it up sooner to, to lock in these costs with, um, early, lock in the city's portion early, what about that 10 million differential? Is, is that the project savings you're referencing, or how are we addressing that increase that we did not expect when we last budgeted?
Do you want to talk about that through the RTSD?
Yeah, I think the, Randy Hoskins, Assistant City Engineer. One of the big things that's, that's really saved our bacon on this is the Railroad Transportation Safety District coming to the table with, with additional funding for this. And so, um, as, as the project costs went up, the RTSD basically raised their contribution to the project a similar amount, um, a similar percentage. And so by doing that, that basically covered, um, the additional money that we needed. We've also sort of been banking money all along, if you will, um, by putting in some federal funds in the past, um, transferring some savings from some other federal aid projects into sort of an account with the Department of, of Transportation. And then, um, so that, that accounts for 18 million, 18.6 million of the amount of the 50 million that we had to come up with.
Yeah, the transfers in the RTSD tot, added together, um, add up to 18.6 million?
No. Um, in, in section three of the agreement on the next piece of legislation, you'll see that breakdown. You've got 18.6 million that's already been banked. That's what Randy was talking about, um, from previous allocations.
Right. That's, that's already been given to the Department of Transportation and they have that money. And we've got to come up with the other 30, 31.4 million.
Right. So a big help in all of this, uh, 16.4 million will be paid September 30th, 2017. That consists of that 10 million from the RTSD and then 6.4 from the city. That's that first 2017 payment. Um, and then 15 million paid by September 30th, 2018. That consists of another 10 million from RTSD and 5 million from the city. So the RTSD went up 7 million, um, from 13 up to 20 because of those kind of railroad costs, but also because they're an exceptional partner.
Thank you.
Um, and I do want to share a tidbit unless there's more questions.
Cindy has one.
Yeah, so, um, actually mine was more a comment. I just wanted to, um, thank you for working on this and the additional cost and being able to fit it into, uh, our budget without having to increase any taxes. I think that is huge for, uh, citizens of Lincoln and I appreciate that. I appreciate, uh, working with the county engineer and RTSD too. And, um, it was a big surprise to everyone, but it got solved really, really, really quickly. And I'm glad we're moving forward like this. And my understanding is that the money, the 6.4 million is, is money that is already available, uh, that we'll be able, we're not going to have any trouble paying that when the time comes, um, September 30th, correct?
Right, yes, we're all set. And the county board already, um, adopted the supplemental number three too, so.
That was a question of mine also.
Yes.
Okay, so your tidbit.
Yes, oh, this is so cool. So I'm going to share this and Randy can maybe detail this. I want to tell you this story. I found this article, I was kind of perusing some of our old documents from the South Beltway. And, um, this was from a 1971 corridor study that was conducted. This is an article by the Lincoln, Lincoln Nebraska Journal, that was their name at the time, August 5th, um, 1972. I was seven months old. So believe it or not, um, the South Beltway and the East Beltway weren't always supported by the community. And in 1972, a warrant study was commissioned to examine whether a four-lane freeway was even needed around Lincoln. And while the West Bypass had a ton of support, the South Beltway and East Beltway proposals received a lot of citizen opposition. And so there was this commissioned study by the Roads Department. Why? Because the estimated price tag for the entire freeway around the city of Lincoln was 80 million dollars at the time. So the funniest part about this article too is that, um, there was assurance from the officials that it's okay if we do this study, uh, it's not going to delay the project. And, um, we're actually sitting at a 48-year delay. So, there you go.
Okay, very good. Any, any questions?
Just as another tidbit, when I was elected in 1999, it was going to be six years till completion.
Oh. Okay, this gets us closer, that's for sure. And I would like to invite Pam and Roger to speak if you.
Well, I appreciate the fact that Roger just got dressed up to come here.
He waited a long time.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Now, this is a really big project, um, for the county and the city. And I think as we go forward and as we continue to embrace projects like this, it really brings to light that we are one entity. We are one entity and that we really need to address these problems in a collaborative and cooperative way so that the citizens of Lincoln, who are all citizens of Lancaster County, and the citizens of Lancaster County can have the best possible transportation routes. And I look forward to continuing to work with you on these issues in the future.
Questions for Pam?
So when do we start moving dirt?
I think that's going to be a little while.
That's, that's a state answer.
Guys were warming up out there at the fairgrounds over the weekend.
Roger Feigard, Executive Director at RTSD. And I wasn't seven months old in 1972. I actually remember that study and was very, very disappointed when the community chose not to put that in. But, uh, you know, time takes care of all kinds of things. Maybe that's not the best route. The, the current location maybe better serves our land use and the future for our community. I would simply say that once again, this is evidence of the tremendous value of an entity like a Railroad Transportation Safety District that has dedicated funding and resources to help both the city, the county, some of the other communities in the county as well with projects where we typically don't have the financial resources to do some of those very special and, and high-cost projects. So it was a privilege and a pleasure to work on that and to be a part of, of bringing that forward. And to be able to cap those increases at only 50% of the increase over the original agreement is a tremendous success and evidence that our director did a good job of working with the Nebraska Department of Transportation, their director, to, to make that happen.
Questions for Roger or Pam? Thank you very much.
I might say one other thing, just for anybody out there listening. The RTSD making this contribution moving forward does not jeopardize or slow down or delay any of their current projects that they had within their CIP as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. We'll start with our public hearing resolutions. Item 11, Report of Claims Against the City for the Period of July 16 through 31st, 2017, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by John.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the denial of the Kerwin, uh, amount or situation and instead move it to an approval for $480.
Second.
Moved and seconded, moved by John, seconded by Cindy, $480. Discussion. Yes. Carl and Benny.
Thank you. I, I would ask John to consider a, an amendment to 450. And the reason I say that is, uh, Mr. Kerwin didn't have a specific, you know, didn't present us with any documentation to show us the value of the vehicle. He did have the opportunity to get it out of the impound lot for 450 dollars. He, he declined that, didn't have the money for that. Seems like to me that, that's a reasonable value.
Uh, I, I understood he said it was going to be 480 to take it out of the impound lot. So that's why I came up with the 480.
Okay.
I have.
Okay.
Maybe I, maybe I misunderstood.
We're going to be.
You don't know?
He didn't give us any documentation, uh, as to a price or value. All we had to rely on is, we know the sheriff's auction.
Do you want to?
Right. Okay.
I don't know that $30 is going to hurt anyone, so if that's important to you.
That was just the basis for what I was setting the amount for, so whatever that figure is.
Did anyone else want to comment on that? Was like.
I jotted down 480 to get the car out of the impound lot, but I, so that's how, I understood it the same way that John did.
Benny?
I have a slightly quick, different question. Jeff, if you could help me with, it's more of a legal aspect of it. So, and I'm going to go back and touch on that. The, our Lincoln police did their due diligence based on the information they had in front of them.
Yes.
It sounds like there might have been a computer foul-up on the state side and the county attorney refusing to negotiate with the claimant with the, in this instance. You talked about precedent, and I'm a little worried about that. If we do this, which might balance the scales back, do we set ourselves up to do it in the future?
Well, and that's always a concern. You want to be consistent, you want to be fair. That's what I'm sure is the standard we all set. If we had a similar case in the future, we would, I would represent to you, we'd look at it the same way. We'd say, were we negligent? If we're not negligent, we're going to recommend denial. It's going to come before you. Someone comes and makes the same argument, I would expect you to be consistent and fair. And so, is there a precedent? Yes. Is that going to be binding to you? No.
The second part of the question.
So you're looking at, at trying to be fair and equitable and, and have some consistency. And frankly, they're never always quite the same. I mean, you get a little bit different circumstance, whether they had an opportunity to get it out for 480 dollars within the month. Uh, the, you know, I, I have evidence in the file to suggest if he would have gone to the right person, tried a little harder, he could have gotten the car out of impound within a couple of days. But if this comes up again, I'll try to give you more information on what he could have done. I'm not blaming him though, because I think, I'm not sure if I would have been able to figure it out. In any case, his car was impounded, it was difficult for him to get it out, he loses his car. So, we know that.
John?
And I don't know if it should have been in my emotion or not, but I, I do feel this is a very unusual circumstance. I don't recall anything in the same ballpark in my 18 years of past service. And so I think, and I'm not saying anyone was negligent per se either. I just think it was an unfortunate set of circumstances and, and with the different effort he's made coming Columbus and what have you, the court cases and so forth. I hope it sends a message to all of the entities that were participating in one form or another to keep, keep that in mind, that we want to look out for our citizens and make sure we're prosecuting in the right way and we listen to the evidence that's trying to be presented.
Okay, any other discussion? Cindy?
Thank you. Um, so, except, I think this is a great ordinance that we have to encourage people not to dr, uh, drive into revocation. But I happen to have been on the side of someone who had to try to get their car back, and it is quite convoluted even for an attorney. And then you have to know to even look. Um, because when they go, the folks at the tow yard, they don't say, oh, there's a way, you just have to go and, and do something legally. Cause obviously they're in business to make money by collecting impound fees. So, um, but that said, I think it's a, it's a good deterrent for many people and I think that, that, um, we've seen that, we've experienced that. But by and large, this young man had an extremely unfortunate experience and, but for our code, he, after he got out, he, a couple of days, he could have gotten his car out, um, for much less money. And so, um, I'm inclined also to, uh, to support this amendment and to just, I just want to apologize as a young man, but I don't think he's in the role. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, because it is really unfortunate and, uh, I know it's hard to replace transportation that you don't count on losing and to, and to lose it permanently is nearly devastating, so.
Okay, other discussion?
Well, I was just going to say, we, we certainly don't want to have a system that, um, punishes an innocent person for not being able to afford to get his car out of the impound lot. So I'm going to support what you're, what you're doing, John.
Okay. On the amendment, please call the roll.
Is this for the 480 or the 450?
Correct, 480.
480.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Now on the main motion? Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 12 is the contract with Carson Global, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Benny, seconded by Jane.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to amend the contract that, can we explain why or you want?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to amend this contract to, uh, reduce the current contract amount of 849,609 to the original contract amount that was proposed by Carson Co. Global, and they were the lowest bidder at 617,562 dollars.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Seconded by John? Discussion.
Now, we've had some things presented to us previously, uh, substitute resolutions and so forth. Could you explain, uh, what's there, or do we have a final copy?
Yes. Um, I think if you'll recall, at our last hearing that was, um, on this item that was on Monday, July 31st, there was a lot of concern raised by certainly several people, our constituents, were concerned about the total dollar amount. And I think many of us were, uh, of a mindset at the, the last meeting to actually find a way, let's just have it as a one-year contract. Um, unfortunately, we went out to legal to get a clarification that we were not able just to do a one-year contract because that would have triggered us to go back, rewrite the scopes, the, the scope of the entire contract and, as a one-year contract, and then go back out to the, the community and get bids again, which would have delayed the project considerably. So we looked at an, an alternative, um, by reducing, uh, the, the city, once they awarded, uh, the, made Carson Co. Global the, the company of choice, then they negotiated to add on some other items such as two waste characterization studies that increased the dollar amount of the original bid project to that 249,000. So we were trying to look for a solution to this and it seemed reasonable just to go back to the original bid that they had proposed, um, that came in the lowest to allow them to go ahead and proceed forward with the understanding that the city is committed to the 392,000. And on the substitute amendment that is before us today, there is one of the lines that is struck, um, in it, which, um, would have removed the option to renew for one additional three-year term. I think we've, we felt very comfortable awarding the contract for the three-year term with a, the dollar amount not to exceed that 617,562,000 dollars, um, as stated in the, in the contract. But, um, without, uh, there is a, a possibility, should there be other studies that, uh, the city and the city council feel merit, then we can approve additional studies, but they must come back before the city council for discussion and, and dialogue and, as well as the public participation. But they must require the city council approval. So that is why, uh, the substitute amendment was issued.
So you're taking out the language that says with a three-year option for renewal?
Correct.
Okay, so let's do that on the official copy there.
Would it be after the word term, delete with the, except with?
So if you look at it, it's on line five, it says for a three-year term upon the terms set forth in said contract is hereby. So you're striking with the option to renew for one additional three-year term, semicolon, I think, or colon.
If you step to a friendly amendment to remove the title of this that says, "And Behavior Change," that just kind of rubs me wrong. I'm sorry.
Well, they're still going to do it no matter what they call it.
Well, I.
They're going to modify your behavior.
Are you saying you're an old dog that can't learn new tricks, John?
Oh, I think I'm very good. Even around me knows I learn new tricks, but I.
Just giving you a hard time, John.
I just don't like George Orwellian stuff.
So you, they're, they can do it to you as long as you don't call it that, right?
So Big Brother and Big Sister are watching.
Resistance is futile. I was going Star Trek and the Board, resistance is futile.
Thank you, I have some staff questions, if law can come forward.
If, if I could have a point of clarification, Jane, are you moving the motion to amend number one that accepts the substitute resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
And the one that I handed out to my council colleagues has struck in line five, the words with the option to renew for one additional three-year term, comma.
Okay.
And that's what I'm correcting on this one.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Thank you. So, we heard some, we heard some testimony tonight, we heard things about there being some changes in the scope and a report falling out, and Mayor Wesley came forward and talked about one of the, one of the bidders, and perhaps with the changes that their bid would be different and so forth, so my question to you is if we, first of all, if we approve this motion to amend, excuse me, that doesn't obligate us to approve the underlying contract? It, it then becomes part of the underlying resolution, correct?
Right, there'll be two votes.
I'm sorry?
There'll be two votes.
Right.
You can vote yes on one and no on the other, no on one, yes on the other, yes on both.
Okay, so that, and so that's clear.
No on both.
So, okay, so if we wanted to, for instance, if we thought we should go back to the drawing board and maybe reopen this because of the changes, would we have to defeat the contract, or is there a motion or another option for us to do that?
I think if, if you want to reopen the process, for whatever reason, you would vote no on the resolution, you could vote yes on the amendment, but you'd, you'd want to vote no on the resolution, and at that point, we would have no process and would be back to public works to say, you know, we've got this budget line, we've got this project in mind, we'll just start a new, new process and do an RFP, and it could be for expedited process, or the same process, or whatever.
Okay, and it was explained, Councilwoman Raybold said that when we were, because there was, someone did come up and talk about the newspaper article about reporting that there was a one-year, it was gonna be changed to a one-year, and so it, she indicated that if we change it to a one-year, then basically we would have to reopen the process, does that?
Right, you, you've got a process where you've laid out the specifications, and you say, we want to have proposals, and this is what you have to do, and one of those specifications was a three-year contract. So you've got a number of good companies that put a lot of work into their proposals and said, here's what we're willing to do. Here's the price, here's what we'll do. The committee went through all those proposals and said, this is the best one. Now, there is some negotiation that can take place, and in this case, it isn't always the case, but in this case, what the city came back and said, we'd like you to do some additional things, pay more money for that. Sometimes they, they negotiate and want the price lowered, but, but that's after the, the proposal's been accepted. If you, though, change the rules and say, no, no, we want to go instead of three years, one year in the specifications, then anybody else that had submitted a proposal or even thought about submitting a proposal really, I mean, it wasn't a fair playing field, because they could come in and say, listen, I would have had an entirely different proposal if I would have known it was one year. I did this proposal based upon three years, if it was one year, it would have been different, in fact, my understanding is, as soon as that newspaper article was published, purchasing agent got a call from one of the people that had a proposal saying, hey, I can come up with a different proposal for one year, give me a chance. And so that's why the law department, the purchasing department, in reply to some questions from, from people in the city council, said, no, if you want to make those, a change as far as the term, you have to reopen the process. That protects the integrity of our bidding process.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions, comments?
Okay, on the amendment, the substitute amendment proposed by Jane, with the line deleted as she described, please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Now on the main motion, discussion, Cindy?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to delay this with public hearing. I have a couple of concerns, one is that, in fact, the gentleman came up and said he had actually looked for the first RFP and couldn't find that, and this is a seventy-five-page document with a lot of precise numbers that's available right now online, and I would like, for purposes of transparency, for the folks that I've been hearing from, and I've been hearing from a lot of folks that talking about the numbers, and I'd like them to be able to see what exactly the numbers are and have that linked for them. Also, you know, I, I heard tonight that we, we backed out the study.
Before you get too far along, we need, we need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
So there's a motion to delay for how long?
For two weeks.
For two weeks, until the?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth of August.
Yeah, twenty eighth of August, yeah.
Second for discussion by John. Okay, now you can talk more about it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. I always forget that step, right, because I'm just a talker. So, I do have some concerns because we, in the, in this particular instance, we pulled out a study that evidently was added on, and now there was indications that that study's not going away, it's just gonna come back sometime, maybe with someone different, or it's gonna come in later, and they're gonna ask for that study, and so it seems as if maybe the scope has been changed somewhat, and so I have some concerns about that, and about, and I just want to look into it and discuss that a little further, and about the, the transparency issue so that folks can see it, and so now when I'm having conversations with people, we're able to talk about those individual, I had a number of people that talked to me about the individual tasks in various steps, and I'm guessing that the initial response to the RFP had those figures that would, are now constitute the six hundred and seventeen thousand. So I would like, I would like to see that delay so that we have opportunity to link that and let people look at it.
Okay, other discussion? Benny?
Jane, Hannah here first, but I, I want immediately after her.
Well, I like the fact that people are discussing it. I think it's critically important because I think that generates interest so that everybody is excited to know more about recycling and actually how to get recycling done and how to move the city forward. I have to tell you that I'm, I'm not gonna support the delay for a couple of reasons. Number one, we have been talking about recycling in the city of Lincoln for a pretty long time. I can tell you that I was one of the participants on the twenty forty solid waste task force, and that was, I'm thinking two and a half years, or close to two years of, of work, and a lot of the, all the stakeholders that were involved in recycling were there and participated. We had tremendous feedback from so many parties, we all, we always had public hearing at each one of our meetings, so we could encourage the public to, to bring forward their concerns if we're going down the wrong path, and certainly we had the private haulers at each and every one of our meetings. We spent a lot of time talking about the recycling ordinance, and it went back and forth for, for quite some time about the importance, we've had testimony from so many people on how important recycling is to our city to, to make us a more progressive city, so we've had the discussion when we had the ordinance, and then the recycling ordinance got gutted, and then the mayor vetoed that, and then we had a lot of concern from our constituents out there that we want recycling, we want to move recycling forward, what is the holdup? What is going on? And so, a, a, a small group of individuals got together and we said, we're gonna put it on the ballot, and again, there were so many opportunities to engage with the public, for, for all those volunteers that collected signatures for weeks and weeks and weeks, and they collected over seven thousand signatures from people who said recycling is important to them, let's get on with it, let's get on with it, no more delays, let's put it on the ballot, and, and everybody can vote on it, and we know that it would have overwhelmingly won if it were on the ballot, but we, as a collective body, we came up with a great compromise that will keep the ball moving forward without any delays of having it on the May ballot, and to me, that's the exciting thing, is that we worked very hard, we compromised. The important thing that came out of the twenty forty solid waste task force, the important thing that came out of the ordinance effort, the important thing that came out for the ballot initiative was the word education, education, education. And our public wanted it to be convenient, and they wanted it to be cost-effective, and so we heard that again today. Now, delaying it another two weeks, I think is inappropriate at this point in time. I want to remind our colleagues that we got this information on July thirty-first, that it was out there for the public to, to peruse and to look at. In addition to that, we had some questions, and there was some alarm about the terms of the contract, and then Donna Gardner presented to us on August third supplemental information, going back and looking at all the contracts, which I think was very important, and I'm so glad, and thank you for putting this information together, because it really gave us a lot more detail on the committee that met, the committee that evaluated, all the, the four companies that presented incredible bids. It certainly helped me understand the cost involved and the tremendous amount of detail and the direction that this, this project was going. I had a chance to review it, and to be honest, Carson Co. Global was the, the lowest bidder. They had a great deal of detail, they were hitting all the, the essential elements in the RFP, which was one of the key requirements. I'm not saying that the other companies didn't do it. The other companies were just as good about hitting all those other elements, except they were, you know, the, the next highest bidder was four hundred thousand dollars more, Recycle Bank was double the cost, and we know from our meeting on July thirty-first that there were a lot of constituents, I got a lot of email, and I'm pretty sure you all did, plus I heard it from the community, and even from some members who participated on the twenty forty solid waste task force, saying, we never talked about eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, we talked about an educational component going forward of roughly five hundred thousand. Hopefully we'll get grants to, to supplement that, which we did. And so I'm, I'm saying I'm not gonna support the delay of two weeks, primarily because of all the input and feedback that has gotten us to this point in time, where we just need to move it forward. We're really restricting and reducing the, the timeframe where we actually have to call upon them to gear up on their outreach efforts, to gear up on the educational components, to really figure out how we can target the people in our city so that on April first of twenty eighteen, we are gonna hit the ground running, and our, our community is gonna be enthusiastic, and they'll know exactly what it means that the landfill will no longer accept cardboard, but the beauty of it with our partnership with the private haulers, they're also gonna be the ones offering curbside recycling to their customers, many of them do it already, and this is just a great opportunity to really educate our customers. When we're talking about cardboard, we're gonna be talking about all the other recyclable elements that can go in their curbside recycling, it's all part of the process, so by the time we hit year three, we're gonna be so far ahead, and we do hope we have made significant progress and have improved the recycling rate for the city of Lincoln. I find that a two-week lay, two-week delay, I'm sure is not gonna, to offer us any additional information. A two-week delay, in my mind, would say we'd have to open up the whole bid process. We would looking at, and certainly I have talked to Bob Waller with purchasing, I've talked to legal, what is, you know, what is the expedited route we can go, and we're still looking at thirty, thirty days, it might be sometime in October. To me, that's very frustrating for those people that have already bid on this project, have committed tremendous amount of time and effort in getting this done. We've already had a two-week delay, we delayed it from July thirty-first, I'm not sure that this additional two-week delay is gonna be that more enlightening, so I, I just can't support it.
Benny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to thank the individuals from Carson for coming. The presentation this time was much better than the one we saw a couple of weeks ago, a lot more detail, and it was, I was thrilled to see that, thank you very much. I think we are, we should be moving forward. I know, I'm a little fuzzy, fuzzy on the substitute resolution, there were some discussion of evaluations and sixty-day notices and things like that, those are still in place. So I think we can move forward now, and if we have a little bit of time, if it's not going the direction we want to go, we can make some adjustments along the way, so.
I have a staff question for Jeff. I think I heard you say, Jane, that if we delay this, we'll have to just reopen the bid process?
No, I'm, I'm, no, I didn't say that, I said if, what is the point of delaying it? Because if you're, if you're saying you want a two-week delay, to say that you want to open up the bid process.
Okay, because I misunderstood what she was saying.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion? Okay, this is on the motion to delay until the twenty-eighth of August, please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Schob?
No.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
No.
Motion lost, three to four.
Okay, now on the main motion. Discussion? Cindy?
I don't have to go first, but, but I appreciate you calling on me, I just know I gotta get my hand up fast if I'm gonna catch you on this side of the dais, so. Well, I appreciate the efforts of recycling, and I appreciate the fact that people in the city want to recycle. Eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money, and you may say it's six hundred and seventeen today, but we heard testimony that that two hundred and fifty thousand's gonna come back in the form of a study, and for me, it's about priorities. I understand that the administration and some of my colleagues think we need to spend more money than we budgeted for last year, and that's probably gonna come up in a week or two. With that said, looking at eight hundred and fifty thousand right now, I think should not be the priority, even if it's cut back to six hundred. If we got bids that were that high, maybe we need to go back to the drawing board. Maybe we're asking for too much. We heard testimony tonight about not having to reinvent the wheel, and we, we have the same type of citizens that they have in other parts of the country, and maybe we, and there's certain targeting aspects of that, and maybe there's folks out there that already have that, that targeting information, this, this proposal seemed to be really front-loaded with, with research in order to find out why folks don't use curbside recycling and, and so forth, and I'll tell you, I can tell you in northeast Lincoln, the reason is money, they don't, they don't have the money to pay for it, but we have folks in our part of town that every day, every couple of days, they go over to the recycling center and they, they walk their paper over and they put it in, and they put their bottles in, and, and it's gonna be great when we have more bins over for them, they don't need that particular education, I, I think the research component is just overwhelming this, we heard testimony about the part that actually was gonna go to marketing and so forth, and so I'm not able to support this at this point in time.
Okay, Carl?
Okay, thank you. We heard that the, the funds for this program are two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from a state grant, and the rest of the funds are from occupation fees at the city landfill. That's where the funds are coming for, from, for this project. So, dollar figure, which actually is less than the, than the group that worked on the project years ago projected it would be. This is not a surprise, it's what was anticipated. Our community, again, we heard this evening, we're, we're recycling at twenty-one or twenty-two percent. Other communities average thirty-five percent. To use a technical term, we suck. We need to do better in terms of our recycling, and we've got a cardboard ban coming online in about seven months. I, I don't see the purpose of any further delay, we need to get this, this approved and get this group going to educate and, and get our community doing better in terms of the recycling effort that we're all doing, so I support it.
Okay, you have more to say, Jane?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I just, we're, we're voting on the main motion. You know, we even heard tonight from our haulers, and they're gonna be the most, one of the most important partners in this whole project and endeavor, and you heard from them this evening how important education is, to help them do their job, it'll make their job a lot easier, and it'll make the citizens' ability to recycle a lot easier, they need that education component. We know very well that this funding has been approved in the last two budget bienniums, and, and as Carl mentioned, the rates have already been approved, they are in the occupation tax that the landfill is already paying, so the money is already there, and we know from the contract, as it was in the bid process, as in the contract that has been awarded, that the city can, can terminate the contract with thirty days' notice, as well as the Carson Co. Global can terminate the contract, giving us thirty days' notice. More importantly, before we advance on each one of the phases or More importantly, before we advance on each one of the phases or years as the project is laid out, we, they're required to submit to us sixty days before that term is up, a detailed analysis, evaluation, assessment, where they're at. Are we being successful? Are we getting the job done? And the beauty of it in the, the, the contract is, well, the city reserves the right to adjust the scope of work based on the needs of the city during the term of the agreement. So if we, after we review that sixty-day assessment, realize, "I think we need to focus more on multifamily housing and work with the property owners, property management, or the landlords, or landowners," we'll need to do that. And we have the flexibility in the contract to make sure that we're targeting and educating the group that probably needs it the most. And I think that is one of the beauties of this project, that we, we have that flexibility. We can figure out that, yes, we need to be focusing on the low-income elderly in our community. We need to find partnerships, maybe with Tabitha and Meals on Wheels as they go out on their, their daily visits to the low-income elderly to, to really say, "Hey, we can help you with recycling, this is how you do it." These are partnerships that we know that they have the expertise in developing, so I think, and, and I know you said it, Cindy, that it's wonderful that we have those twenty-nine free recycling stations throughout the city, all over the city, that people can, they shouldn't feel obligated to take the curbside recycling. It'll make recycling a lot easier and convenient for them, but no one is obligated to do that. But they will have an opportunity to use any of the twenty-nine free recycling centers throughout the city, which is, which is fantastic. Our goal is really to move, move this, this ball forward on recycling, but we can't forget the fundamental reason why we're doing this. We want to divert all this material from the landfill. Some of this material, like cardboard, should be diverted. It has value. You've heard me say, "Our company recycles a hundred and seventy-five tons of cardboard a month." If we didn't divert it from the landfill, we'd be paying to haul it to the landfill and dump it at the landfill. For us, it allows us to be competitive, and why would we be burying things that have value? I know the U.S. Chamber of Commerce is so supportive of recycling, recycling initiatives, how communities, municipalities need to be better on this. So, I want to say that the, the, the contract is a good one, because we spent a lot of time reviewing it and discussing it, and I think we need to move forward. I think our constituents want us to move forward, judging by the number of emails we've received in the last week about, "Please, let's get recycling going. Let's get the educational program going." So, we need to be moving forward.
John?
Great. Well, first of all, I want to thank Jane for the changes in the substitute language and reducing from that eight hundred and forty-nine thousand to the six hundred and seventeen. That was what it really went out for originally, and I know from what I've heard from a lot of people, as we did hear from some testifiers here, they were very much concerned about the overall amount. And I would say too, I really don't know of anyone in Lincoln who's against recycling. It's probably more the way, the process to get to that. I think there are a lot of good intended Lincolnites on that. With that other grant, that hundred and fourteen thousand that was going to get the, oh, I wanted to ask from Donna Gardner, if, just a clarification, it was my understanding that we're not going to put that other two hundred and fifty in, period. Is that correct for those studies that you had added?
The actual, yes, the actual waste characterization study that was taken out is sixty thousand dollars if we chose to go forward with that. The others would not be put into the contract or used anywhere else.
Or you might do that waste collection internally or something?
We're, we're looking at options for that, yes.
So, we're, we're not going to have us, you're not going to come back to us for more money on that?
Not on the waste characterization study?
And that other amount you had put in to get to the eight fifty?
Certainly not for the other amount. The sixty thousand dollars was already in the budget, we had just wrapped it into this contract.
And as you know, I'm one of those fiscal conservatives, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean you have to spend it.
I'm, I'm learning that one.
We can always give it back to the people who paid it or lower landfill fees.
Absolutely.
Anyway, thank you very much for that clarification. But anyway, as we go through this process, I hope that we are very proactive and willing to fine-tune it and see what works best in our community. Because that's the, the whole goal here, is to get individuals to recycle, make it convenient for them. Now, we talked about the twenty-nine landfill, or excuse me, drop-off sites we have. I would hope that we would focus some of that, the funds and so forth, on getting thirty-nine or whatever. We're growing geographically. I think it's very important. One of the things I heard a lot about from people was, it just isn't convenient, the dumpsters are full, they've been discouraged by pickups, and to me, it just ought to be something that's, that's done very frequently, and so that it's just convenient, and keep those sites clean, seeing those around the world. I would hope too, that we keep politics out of this. I think there have been politics in the background from a number of angles, and I, to me, recycling should not be political, it shouldn't be looked at as that basis. So I think maybe the, the bottom line, I would say, is I want to see us hold the consultant speak to the fire, I want to see visible results here, and it really gets to that increased recycling and that the citizens, in a convenient way, are encouraged to do that. I don't want to look at this as behavioral change initiatives. I, I think the behavior is there, as Ms. Lamb said, about maybe some of the costs to do that in, in certain areas of the city where there may be difficulties economically that then maybe we focus more drop-off sites there to help those people, but do it a common sense way and contain the costs. And so, if we're looking at about three hundred and ninety-two thousand that the city would be paying, yes, it's been paid for already by increased landfill fees, let's spend that very judiciously and get results.
Clearing?
Yeah, I just want to comment on, on the responsiveness this contract has to a very long public process. We've heard from people over the years, whether it's the committee that studied solid waste management, the folks who've come and testified in public hearings, in coffees with citizens, in group meetings, that education is the way that Lincoln wants to move forward with recycling. And now we have the opportunity to move forward with recycling through education. And it's not just a name only, it's not, it's not general, it's very specific. There are five phases laid out, results are expected and clearly spelled out in each of the, the phases. The folks who are agreeing to this, to provide these services, know that they have to report and sixty days before the end of each phase on those results and the associated costs. So we have a lot of checks and balances built in to make sure that, that we are getting results. So, I am excited to start getting results with recycling, and we'll support this.
Benny?
I got nothing.
Okay. Thanks, Benny. All right, a couple, a couple of thoughts. If, if you're like Johnny, you don't want your psychosocial behavior modified, just start recycling before they do the program, okay? So, this amended resolution doesn't give everybody what they want. Some people would want more, some people would want less. I think it represents a reasonable compromise. Thank you, Jane. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Next, public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions are items thirteen through twenty. Ordinances on third reading, item twenty-one, Cop Line Conformance one seven zero one one, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-two is Annexation one seven zero zero eight, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-three is Change of Zone one seven zero one eight, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second? Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-five, Change of Zone one seven zero one nine, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?